Raising hands, talking on the turn.
If you have any documents, do you mean you've got one of these?
If you have, I need to take those. Are you clear on everything else, sir?
I'm glad to hear it.
Good evening, City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. As we gather tonight to conduct the business of this city of Suffolk, we celebrate together the month of June and the beginning of summer. We honor our graduates and our fathers. We celebrate pride. We recognize Juneteenth. Please open our hearts and our eyes to see the diverse communities that make up our city with new eyes. Help us to find the courage to sit and hear others when so often we want to be heard first. Let us see and treat all people with simple human dignity. We ask for guidance and wisdom as we strive to make good decisions for our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please present the resolution for consideration?
Resolution certifying the closed meeting of June the 5th, 2024 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Fawcett, can you please cast your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to approval of the minutes from the April 3rd, 2024 work session and regular meeting. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move for approval.
A motion for approval. Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a special presentation this evening from our Suffolk Tourism Department. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, the City Tourism Development Manager, Teresa Earls, will discuss new marketing efforts by the Tourism Division, made possible by American Rescue Act Tourism Recovery Program Grant. Teresa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Manager. I am so excited to be here. I've been waiting for this presentation for a while now. And let's get started. As you said, the American Rescue Plan Act Tourism Recovery Program, that is a mouthful, so we're going to call it the ARPA grant. And this was a grant that was distributed via Virginia Tourism and the federal government specifically for tourism entities for cities and counties throughout the state of Virginia. And what they basically did was divide a certain amount of money, a big pot of money based on how much you had in tourism receipts in 2019, so that every community was granted a certain amount of money based on how much they bring in. And Suffolk was granted $110,000. Now, Virginia Beach, just for comparison, got about 1.9 million. But the lowest amount that anyone could get was $30,000. So we were definitely above the lowest, and we had a very nice sum of money. And the best thing about it was specifically for tourism. And it could not be for anything you were already doing, so it couldn't replace your current budget. It had to be something that infused dollars into your current budget. And specifically to help recoup any costs that you may have experienced, any losses in your community due to the pandemic. As we know, that people stopped traveling for quite a while, and our businesses and our attractions, they certainly felt the hit. So with the ARPA grant, you could use it for marketing production, paid media, so advertising, public relations, anything that really connected you with your tourism audiences, sales, so you're talking conference sales, group sales, that sort of thing, and then tourism product development. And we were fortunate to not only spread this money wider than we ever could have because we were able to do things that we've never been able to do before. And I will tell you that the idea behind it, and you may have remembered, hopefully, at the State of the City, the last video was our new tourism video. This has been a process that has taken over a year to create because we wanted to really capture Suffolk in all seasons, and different events at different times a year, and really what our guests and our residents can do in Suffolk. And we realized that when people hear tourism, sometimes they think Orlando and Disney World, they think Hershey Park. We know what we are and we know what we aren't. And so it is our job as tourism professionals to accentuate the positives. And we realize that Suffolk is a great place to reconnect, whether you are reconnecting with your family, with your friends, with people you are visiting, or whether you're reconnecting with yourself or nature in that sense. So we are inviting people to come and spend their time in Suffolk and reconnect. We also started our Choose Your Own Adventure campaign. I don't know how many of you remember the books that we had when we were kids. They were called Choose Your Own Adventure. You would read a chapter, and then you got to decide where you were going for the next part of the book. So you didn't necessarily read the book in order. You got to choose your adventure. What step were you taking next? And that is how Suffolk is. We invite you to experience 430 square miles of dynamic opportunities. So you get to choose your own adventure. And what we learned during COVID especially is that people really enjoy being outdoors. And Suffolk always knew this. We have always promoted our outdoor attractions, but this enables us to really capitalize on what we have, whether it's our natural resources or our entities that take you to those natural resources, whether they're tours or kayak excursions, horseback riding. So the video you saw at State of the City was a general video. It gave you a little bit of everything. The next video that we're going to debut here is specifically for the outdoor adventure enthusiast. Now fingers crossed.
The world has a way of helping you find balance. The open air awakens you to a symphony of sounds. A serene surface invites you to realize that waiting can be the best part. Feeling the freedom to roam, boy, there's nowhere else you'd rather be. When was the last time you shared a ride with friends? Planned to beat the sunrise? Biked down an endless path? Flew from the sky? Or watched the wild? Suffolk is brimming with undeniable charm, a unique blend of all Virginia has to offer. We take pleasure in the details. It's what we do to lift your experience over the top. We know your time is precious, so let's make those moments memorable. Gather around and celebrate a well-played round. Acquire a hidden talent. Or give a meal to a friendly face. Explore without roads. Try the breeze for dinner. Taste-test festival fare. Or set your dancing feet free. So wander into the great outdoors. Find your ground. Find your happy place. Find your path. Find your balance. Visit a place beyond compare. Suffolk, Virginia, like no other.
So that was our first video that is specifically geared towards our outdoor enthusiasts. And we're really excited to say that all of those things that you saw, it's not magic, it's not marketing magic, it's really Suffolk. And it allows us to showcase what we know as tourism professionals as some of the best opportunities we have to offer, not only our visitors but also our residents. I know that we often forget, we go to work, we go to school, we drive, and we don't necessarily notice what's all around us. I think we're all guilty of maybe passing the same corner for years and not noticing that there was a business there, and turns out it was there for two decades. And I feel like kind of being at home, you forget what's in your own backyard because you're so busy going other places, and you tend to have blinders on when you're going to and from work. So I'm hoping that not only will these videos reach our target markets outside of this area, but will also reach our residents to realize what quality of life already exists within our borders. The next video is very similar in that you're going to see a lot of the same places, but everything is reframed a little differently. This is specifically geared towards local flavors and independent restaurants, local cuisine, arts, and history.
The world has a way of inspiring you. A color that piques your imagination. A melody carried by a warm breeze. The crisp taste that exceeds expectations. Realize the ripple effect in history. Get lost in a performance. Find the perfect pairing. Tour a variety of tastes. Indulge in treats made with love. Feast on festival finds. Sift through colorful treasures. And land on something lovely. Suffolk is brimming with undeniable charm, a unique blend of all Virginia has to offer. We take pleasure in the details. It's what we do to lift your experience over the top. We know your time is precious, so let's make those moments memorable. Where else can you find artists in the street, delighting in each unique perspective? Stroll with storytellers. Transport yourself back in time. And soak in the traditions. Challenge yourself to learn something new. Reconnect with the past. Know where to go. To find inspiration. Visit a place beyond compare. Suffolk, Virginia, like no other.
And that is our video that is geared towards food, history, and art. And there's something, obviously, for everyone. And as we go through with these videos, now we have a great foundation of B-roll, so to speak, so that we can then in turn do more videos that just build on the footage we already have. We can then spend more time getting to the businesses that perhaps weren't available to us at the time of filming and the attractions that maybe weren't open. And it allows us to really move forward. This grant has given us a really strong foothold in our industry as far as tourism is concerned. Another thing that we were able to fund through the ARPA grant is our visitor guide. I know you each received one in your bag at State of the City, and you can also find them at the Visitor Center in a variety of different places, and you can find them online. I know Val's going to pull it up for us. You can go to ISSUU.com and flip through the Visitor Guide online. So if you can't get to the Visitor Center, or you just want to look up something really quickly, you have this particular publication at your fingertips online. And not only do you have the Visitor Guide, but we also have our Good Time Guide, we have coloring books, we have a variety of publications that we produce in-house, and you can download them for free. And the great thing about this Visitor Guide is that we were able to design it and print it for very little money because we didn't use advertisers. We were able to create it in-house and then send it to printing, and it cost us nothing because of the ARPA grant. And this too will grow, you know, despite the fact that the grant was a one-time-only thing. We now have a wonderful, basic Visitor Guide that we can keep building on and maybe expand as far as the number of pages and the content, you know, each year or when they run out, depending, whichever comes first. But we're super excited to have our first actual Visitor Guide that we can distribute throughout the country. We really do have regular requests through our website and through social media, and this is something that is really available to everyone. Okay, Val. She's the wizard behind the curtain. There we go. Also, as part of this grant, when we talked about sales and tourism development, we were able to get trade show supplies. And we have new branding, so it was nice to finally get things with our new logo. The two images you see on the left are examples of our quick screens that we call them, they're pull-up banners. We have several of them, and we have multiple versions of them so that we can send them out to welcome center blitzes, we can have them in hotels when we have reunions and conferences and weddings even. They can be on display throughout, not only Suffolk, but throughout the state. Just our first time getting to use some of our new items was at the Suffolk Earth and Arts Festival. You'll see we have a branded table skirting, we also have one of our pull-up screens, and it's just an example of how we're really developing a cohesive look. I know we all hear branding and that sort of thing, but it's nice that Suffolk Tourism has found its way into a sweet spot, and a lot of that is due to the ARPA grant. We're also marketing to our locals. We understand that tourism, by state's definition, is anyone visiting from over 50 miles away. And obviously, we want that. When I talk to people about tourism, I always say, you know, it's really good to love local and support your local businesses because you are keeping that money that you make and you spend within your own community. You are sustaining your businesses and your community. But the great thing about bringing in outside folks is that they're bringing in dollars that aren't already in circulation in your economy, and they are stimulating your local economy. They are coming, spending, and leaving. We don't need to build them schools, no offense. We don't need to build new roads for them. But they do the best, and then they have a great time, and they go back and they tell someone else, and then they come back. And that helps infuse our local economy with outside dollars, and that's what we want. But in the meantime, we want our locals to appreciate all the things that we have to do, and we want those businesses to stay in business, and we want those events to be attended, so when our visitors do come from out of town, they have something to see and do. So we've extended our branding to our local ads with Choose Your Own Adventure for our citizens and our nearby neighbors. So whether you're looking for movies and music, or you're looking to go horseback riding or to a festival, we are getting the message out, and we are connecting people with good times throughout the city. And that concludes my presentation. You can always find more information about what we offer at visitsufficva.com. All of our social media is visitsufficva. You can follow, you can share, you can tag. And our videos, now that you've seen them, you'll be able to find them on our websites and social media, and there will be 15 and 30-second clips that are smaller that will be used for programmatic and native advertising throughout the western part of the state and east coast. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Earls. Counsel, any questions or comments? Here we go. Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, sir. Very good job. I like you. I like the advertisement, I like that, something like that, I like to see trying to get it out to the community, use what you have with the magazine type. I think that was real good. I like that. Really like it. Okay. Well, I just want to ask you this question. Do you have a tourist committee, like some of the residents or something like that? That like, because I met a group, and they had some good ideas, and I think I would like to let you sit down and talk with them, some of the stuff is up there, but I think that that involvement will be something that enhance a lot of other communities, some ideas, what Suffolk wants or what do they want. So I'm going to get your number and introduce to that group. I thought it was a good group, I sat about an hour, but they have some great ideas, great ideas. And like I said again, good job.
Thank you. I never turn down a good idea.
Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Teresa, thank you very much for an excellent presentation. I think the videos are very well-done, and I think your point about, you know, trying to get the people in the city to recognize for our own selves what we have can sometimes be a challenge because it's always sometimes more fun to talk about where you've been, you know, rather than what you've got in our own backyard. But we are very, very fortunate in this city to have the opportunities to recreate in the many different ways that we do. And I can tell you from personal experience that kayaking on some of our local lakes back into the Cypress swamps or whatnot is an amazing experience, and you almost feel like you've been traveled back in time four, 500 years, and you're one of the first people to go through that particular area. So congratulations on a presentation well done, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Teresa. I just want to piggyback on, I think the tapes, the filming is spot-on, it's good. I know you'll expand on that. I did very well until you got to the snake. I'm done. Okay? But anyway, it was good, and I appreciate what tourism is doing. And I know that this is going to expand greatly as you go. You all have done a phenomenal job just at this point, and you always have, but to even get to this point is just good stuff, and I just would like to tell you all to keep on and keep on bringing it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. The snake was not a paid actor, I promise.
I was good until we got to that, and go, yeah, I'm okay now.
He was really cute, though.
Yeah, not me.
My daughter was an actor. She gets paid in Happy Meals.
I'll be good at everything other than that, thanks.
Teresa, I just want to piggyback on what's been said. I very much appreciate the work that you do, and your department does, but lots of times in the background we don't realize it, that you're also collaborating with other departments, or Media Department, or Economic Development. I mean, this is a citywide effort from really all angles, and you were right on point when you mentioned the economic impact of tourism, because we have the economic development, the economic end of it, trying to attract businesses here, but what's going to attract people here is the Tourism Department, it's the Quality of Life issues, which you address. As you mentioned, we closed out the State of the City pretty much with your first video, and I think it caught everybody's attention. It was very, very well done. I think you hit, you know, with the diversity that we have, you got a lot of it in there. It really showcased our city as to a lot of the attractions, benefits, and assets that we have available. So once again, keep up the good work. I appreciate the effort, and you didn't have to work real hard to make us look good, but that really looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's actually been a joy.
Okay, well now, at this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. At this time, a motion would be in order, counsel. Councilman Johnson.
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We have no agenda speakers this evening.
Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please present the items for consideration?
Consent agenda item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional state funds for Suffolk Public Schools. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Nansim River Garden Club for the City of Suffolk Festival Park. Consent agenda item number nine, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Smart Scale Funding Program. And consent agenda item number 10, an ordinance to appropriate and transfer automated traffic enforcement camera program funds from the Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for Community Safety Improvements.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, the adopted state budget included $5,859,206 in additional funding for the Suffolk Public Schools for fiscal year 2024-2025 school year. As you're aware, the state budget was adopted after City Council adopted the FY24-25 City Operating Budget. The superintendent has outlined the uses for the additional funds in his May 30th, 2024 letter to me as follows. 3% raise, which includes a step plus a 2% cost of living adjustment, which is $3,603,004. Health insurance, increased costs of $1,500,000. Permanent part-time staff raise of $246,203. Three additional teachers, a Navy J ROTC instructor at Kings Fork High School, a career and technical education teacher at Kings Fork High School, a theater teacher at Lakeland High School, all of which totaled about $210,000. We do have a special education coordinator at $130,000. Enhanced security camera software for weapon detection at $100,000. Uniforms and supplies for the Navy Contet Program at $70,000. As you may recall, in our joint meeting in April, there was discussion of the state budget versus our budget, and at that time, the school's budget was based on the legislative, on the governor's budget at that time. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the FY2024-2025 Suffolk Public Schools operating budget by the $5,859,207. Item number eight, the city has received $10,000 donation from the Nansim River Garden Club in support of the downtown festival park landscaping. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY23-24 Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $10,000. There's no local match. Item number nine is a resolution to endorse three project applications under the Smart Scale Funding Program. Three projects are the Route 460 widening construction costs, the Seaboard Coastline Trail Segment 3C, and the Bridge Road College Drive Left Turn Lane improvements. In regard to item 10, is an ordinance to appropriate and transfer $619,000 of automated traffic enforcement camera funds from Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for Community Safety Improvements. The funds will be used for the following initiatives. Motorized trikes for the police department, drug and IV box exchange program, the trikes were $65,000, the exchange program was $454,000, and the portable speed education trailers, there's five of theirs at $100,000. Adoption of the ordinance will provide for the transfer expenditures of $619,000 of automated traffic enforcement funds from the Road Maintenance Fund to the General Fund for the Community Safety Projects outlined. outlined. And with that, I have to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Mayor, if I could, go ahead and move for approval as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
I'd second that, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I'm wondering if maybe at this time, if you would just give a little refresher primer, if you will, about how the traffic enforcement camera money is received into the city and then why we have to transfer it. Because based on some of the emails that I've got, it seems like we're doing a little bit of a sleight of hand. But I know that we're just basically following how the money has to move through the city budget to be allocated. And then also, if you would just remind everybody about the, what we are allowed to use that money for. Because I know in the frequently asked questions section of the website that explains all this, that has not been updated and it still just shows traffic safety only.
Yes. As you may recall, when we started out, we, the funding comes in from our consultants who gets the money from the tickets that are issued. That goes in, currently, this fiscal year goes into the Road Maintenance Fund. As you recall, in the budget, we've, when we adopted that, we laid forth the process that would go into a community safety fund as we move forward in the next fiscal year, July 1. So currently, what we're doing right now is taking funding for projects that the Public Safety Committee meets on and discusses. We bring that forth to you right now. And that money is then appropriated out of the Road Maintenance Fund to those various projects. The projects that we're appropriating funding for are all safety projects. We, they're not all road projects, but a lot of them are. We did the course sidewalks at Kings Fork School. We've done the safety lights improvements at the schools. We've done a guard rail at Mills Road. But some of it also, we've done bulletproof vests for the sheriff's office. Right here, what we're trying to do is we are under a mandate to set up our own pharmacy for our fire and rescue to deal with their narcotics that has to be under lock and key. That's the 464,000. Part of this today's 454, thank you. So we have a certain process that they have to go through. It's got to be double locked. So this is getting the hardware. So we can have the cameras, the cages, everything we need there. The trikes are for our police officers. It gives us a little bit better response as we can do downtown patrol a little bit better, on our trails a little bit better. We could also use it for special events. And then on the portable speed education trailers, we get several requests monthly for having one of those trailers in various neighborhoods to maybe alert our residents that they're traveling too fast through neighborhoods. So we're getting five additional of those trailers to help us meet the requests of our residents. I hope I answered.
Can you cut me back on, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Yes, Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for that. That does answer my question. I just wanted to put everybody's mind to ease out there that we're not, we haven't promised that the money would be used for one thing and we're now using it for something else. I just want to make sure that that perception doesn't stick.
One thing I would add is the ordinance that was passed originally did not have a specified accounting to that. But we have always stated it would be for public safety improvements, whether it's road or, and as a public safety committee formed, we have moved directions to other safety projects, too.
Right. Thank you for that.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you for asking that question. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for trying to give a good explanation. The one thing that I just want everybody to be clear on is that the money that's coming in from the violations that we receive, it comes back to the city. In no way, shape, or form are we using road maintenance funds for these type of items that we're bringing forth. That is not where that money's coming from. The money's specifically coming from the violations. It's not taking away a dollar from the road maintenance funds that are in place. I just want that to be clear because you're just holding that money in the road maintenance fund right now because that's the only place we had to put it at the time that funding came in. However, there's a correction, if I'm not mistaken, that's going to happen on July 1. It'll correct that. So we've gotten some emails and they're banging on us about using road money, maintenance money for this type of stuff. And we're not doing that. It's only, this funding is coming from the violations that are going to be used for only public safety issues. The committee deems that has been brought to the committee and vetted that are, where this funding could be used, that we don't have to take from the city's funding and budget. So I, too, wanted to get involved in that because I've gotten some emails on it. And I just think it's getting kind of twisted here where, what the money's being used for. And the money is actually going to be a good placeholder to be used for public safety issues that we have to use it for. I mean, we couldn't do the drug enhancement that we got to use for fire if we didn't have this money coming in. We'd have had to find that 464,000 somewhere else. That could have been potentially, it came out of the budget because that came in after the budget was established, the mandate from the state. So, you know, the Public Safety Committee is spot on doing the right thing for the public. And it has no effect on our public works and what they're doing for our roadways. Thank you.
Okay, before we vote, I'd just like to comment also. When the Public Safety Committee was actually formed, it had absolutely no bearing on any particular source of income. It had nothing to do with the speed enforcement cameras. This is not an issue of, we had speed enforcement cameras, so we decided to create a Public Safety Committee. The Public Safety Committee was actually created before we knew that there was going to be one penny worth of revenue. The purpose of the Public Safety Committee was to get all of the personnel in one room that directly or indirectly are responsible for public safety. And basically just to brainstorm as to how we could use and combine whatever resources we did have outside of any camera enforcement or any other revenue. The camera enforcement revenue is not budgeted like normal revenue. It's not budgeted like sales tax or meals tax. We don't anticipate anything because there was never any revenue anticipated or guaranteed. It's just guaranteed to be revenue neutral to where it never cost us anything. So what goes into the budget is not anticipated revenue or forecast revenue. It's actual revenue that was collected from the prior year. So once we realized that there was some revenue going to be created, which it's substantially less now than it was to start with, violations are down in all the school zones and all the work zones, which the 460 work zone is no longer active. But from where it started, every single one of these speed zones is down anywhere from 78% to 82%. From 78% to 82%. In one month, the initial month on 58, we had over 15,000 violations. It's down to 3,000. So it's actually working. So once that money, once we saw that money was going to be available, and we happened to have already established the Public Safety Committee, it opened up not only the forum to be able to talk about these items, but provided us the resources for an immediate response based on input from the fire department, the police department, the Commonwealth's Attorney, from the school system, whoever's there that had a safety concern that they would like to have addressed. Then we were able to discuss that in our Public Safety Committee meetings and then suggest to council that that specific amount of money be transferred from an account that you, that the money is placed. And that's basically what it is. It's a holding pot for money. Now, sometimes we could use it for road improvement, but this is not, as Councilman Fawcett alluded to, this does not replace any capital improvement projects. But what this does is provide a source where a member of the Public Safety Committee, and most importantly, or more importantly, members of the community, of citizens, I want you to go to our website. There's a tile at the bottom that says Public Safety Committee. It's one click on that. Once you hit the committee, you click on the insignia, and it'll open up a sheet, one little piece of paper. You can provide as much or as little information, personal information, as you like. You can put your name, your address, your phone number, your email, or you can just skip all of that. And just in the comment section, let us know what you would like to have done in your neighborhood to address safety, be it camera, be it a light, be it a building that needs to be taken down, some vegetation that needs to be removed, a sidewalk that may need to be placed. And put your request, submit that request via that portal. Once you do that, it does not go into the black hole. It goes directly to the city manager's office. And then from there, a lot of those issues, he handles on a day-to-day basis. But if it's something outside of that that requires additional funding, then it can go to the Public Safety Committee. And the great thing about it, unlike, one thing I've learned, the difference between private enterprise and government lots of times is time. Nothing happens right away. But in this case, we can actually look at it, we can recommend it, and within 45 days, it's happening. And I think that's huge. When a citizen can make a request, we can approve the money, and we can have this thing underway within 60 days. I think it's a big plus. It's pretty amazing. So please take care of it. And I just, I have a hard time missing any opportunity to talk about our Public Safety Committee and getting the word out to our citizens that we want you to let us know what you would like to have in your neighborhood. Because nobody knows better than the people that live in the neighborhood exactly what they'd like to have. So with that being said, we do have a motion on the floor for approval on a second of the consent agenda as presented. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one public hearing this evening, which is an ordinance vacating and abandoning General Early Drive located between Prudential Boulevard and Murphy's Mill Road, which is zoning map 25, parcels 57, 57A, and 57F. Account numbers 252849000, 252847000, and 253501500. This is STV 2023-1. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening for consideration and public hearing is an ordinance that would vacate and abandon General Early Drive. This is a prescriptive easement right-of-way located south of Prudential Boulevard that connects to ultimately Murphy's Mill Road to the south. This property, or this right-of-way, rather, was known at the time of the rezoning for the Port 460 Logistics Center rezoning request, that this right-of-way would ultimately need to be abandoned. You can see here on the conceptual layout for that particular development project, that the right-of-way kind of bisects right through the property, that did not necessarily align with their plans. And ultimately, they will be constructing a variety of internal rights-of-way to meet their needs as a part of that rezoning and ultimately development. So this is where that's located relative to the conceptual plan that was submitted with the document, the development request for that rezoning. So this segment is about 3,700 linear feet or so, ultimately consists of an area of about two and a half acres in total. But it currently abuts properties under two sets of ownerships, one being the Port 460 Logistics Group, the other being a separate owner called 460 Acquisition LLC. They have property right along Route 460. So their property abuts on one side, a small portion of it. And then the ownership group for the Port 460 development owns two parcels that are on either side of it. When you have a vacation of this nature, one half of the vacation goes to the adjacent owner on one side, the other half to the adjacent owner on the other side. So in this case, we have 30 feet of prescriptive easement right-of-way. 15 of it would go to the one owner, 15 would go to the other side. So as this prescriptive easement, I use that term, this is a burr deck road because it was located in what used to be the jurisdiction of Nansm County. And it was part of the devolution agreement that the Virginia Department of Transportation entered with the City of Suffolk several years ago, meaning that VDOT has reviewed this request as well. And in a letter to us on March 25, stated that they no longer have an interest in the right-of-way, thus releasing reverter rights to the city to make a decision. The Department of Public Works has no objection to this request and has reviewed it as well. So here is an illustration that shows the length of the right-of-way, at least on the northern side. And this is where you have multiple ownerships, one on one side, one on the other. The red line indicates half that will go to the Port 460, or sorry, the 460 Acquisition LLC owner group that has that direct frontage on Prudential Boulevard. The yellow portion would go to the Port 460 LLC. The rest of it, indicated in purple, will be dissolved internally amongst the Port 460 parcels. So staff has reviewed this request. VDOT has reviewed this request. We have no objections. There will be an internal roadway network developed in conjunction with the development of the Port 460 Logistics Center. Thus, we are recommending its approval before you this evening. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and is to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do you have anyone present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure, Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion from Councilwoman Williams for approval. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second, Councilman Johnson, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no other ordinances this evening, no resolutions. We do have a staff report pertaining to a plan of finance for the 2024 bond issuances. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In support of the adopted FY2425 capital budget, the city has planned to issue bonds for the construction of a portion of the ongoing and proposed projects. With us this evening is Kyle Lox with Davenport and Company, the city's financial advisor, to discuss the plan of finance for the 2024 bond issuance. Kyle?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Manager, nice to see you as always. We appreciate being able to be here with you, as we typically are this time of year after you've adopted your budget and your capital program. What we have up on the screen is a relatively brief presentation, really an introduction of what we'll be going through over the course of the next couple of months and bringing some specific actions back to you. We want to give you a briefing on this. We want to give you a briefing on this and work through some of those processes and move back to you in July. So with that, again, in terms of background, you all obviously know this, you've recently adopted both your budget and that multi-year CIP that serves as the basis for the capital investment that you'll be doing over the next five or so years for the city. So we use that as the basis and the background for all of the planning. And the second bullet point, the city continues to enjoy AAA credit ratings. So you have three AAA credit ratings, those are the highest possible credit ratings that any local government can have. And so all of the planning that is done in concert with your budget and your capital program is really done with an eye towards maintaining all those credit ratings, which allows us to borrow at the lowest possible interest rates and also gives us the widest variety of options as we think about ways to finance the capital projects that we'll talk about. So there's really two components of what we'll talk about this evening. The first is what we'll call the general government CIP that we're going to kind of include schools in as well. We'll give you a little bit of detail on that. The other component in this third bullet point here is our stormwater. The city's had for a number of years a stormwater revenue bond program that's self-contained within an enterprise fund that fully pays for itself, much as our water and sewer funds do. That's a best practice, and so the same as we've done over the last two years, we'll have a process for both our general government projects that we'll talk about as well as our stormwater projects on the next couple of pages. First, we'll cover our general obligation new money. And again, this is really our general CIP plus the schools. We've had a couple of unique aspects of school funding the last several years by virtue of the large middle school project and also some special funding from the state. And so one element of what we'll be bringing forth to you is in really bullet point number two here, a formal and final authorization by the city council of what's called a literary loan. And so a literary loan is a special loan from the state. It's at a low interest rate, and it is only for school construction. That's been awarded by the state via competitive process. It goes towards the middle school project, and it is $25 million. So what we'll need to do as a city to do sort of the final approvals for that literary loan that, again, has already been awarded by the state, is to do a public hearing that we'll talk about at the end of the presentation. So that's the $25 million component of it. The other component is called our general CIP, separate and aside from that literary loan, which is about $10 million. A little bit smaller this year because the literary loan is taking up a decent portion, and for a good reason, it's at a very good interest rate. And so in the aggregate, we have about $35 million of projects that we'll be borrowing for, again, via the adopted CIP, for both general government and schools projects. You can see at the bottom of the page there what the breakout of that $10 million is. It's about 6.6 for the general fund, and then about 3.5, I'm doing a little bit of rounding there, for some additional schools projects. That $10 million component, which, again, is separate from our literary loan, will be sold in the public credit markets as we typically do in the summertime. Using those credit ratings, we'll be updating the rating agencies probably during the July timeframe and doing the similar process we have the last several years. On page three here, just a little bit more detail on the literary loan. I mentioned at the outset, it's a special funding program from the state. It's been around for a long, long time. The state's put some new funding in it by virtue of this most recent administration. So what it really amounts to is a $25 million loan at a 3% interest rate. While rates are still very good in the general public markets, that 3% rate, which is fixed and known, is below what our general public markets are, so there's certainly an advantage to doing that. We also get, in addition to that, some grant funding that came in at a fairly substantial amount of about $15 million. So when you look at this middle school project in totality, between the literary loan that's at a low interest, the grant funding from the state, and just your other general city funds, you're able to take advantage of a lot of different, unique aspects of capital funding to make that all very, very efficient for purposes of budgeting and financial policies, et cetera. So all that's been factored in, and again, this is really just the last step that we'll take really in July for purposes of authorizing that literary loan. On page number four, just want to give you a visual representation here. We mentioned all the planning that goes into both your budget and your CIP, all with the intent of maintaining those AAA credit ratings. One of the first and foremost things that the rating agencies are going to look at is are we complying with our debt policies when we are moving forward with these capital improvements? And so what we're showing on page number four is two of our critical debt policies. On the left-hand side is debt service to expenditures. That's really how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget are going to make a debt service payment. We, as a city, have a policy that no more than 10 pennies out of every dollar should go to make a debt service payment. And what this graph is showing us is even when we take into account the entire CIP, not just what we're doing with this series of issuances now, but the entire five-year CIP, we're still in very good shape relative to that policy. Gets up to about maybe 7%, 8% in a couple of years, but shows a nice level of contingency, if you will, relative to that policy. That'll look good to the rating agencies. On the right-hand side, we've got debt to assessed value. Different calculation, different ratio, but similar theme. There's a 4% policy there. Our ratios, by virtue of all the tax-based growth that you've had, are hovering below 2%. And even when we factor in the five-year CIP, you continue to hover at that 2% range. We always make some estimates when we do this. This is projecting over a five-year period. Try and be conservative with those estimates. But what this shows us is that both for these immediate issuances and for the rest of the five-year CIP, we're really in good shape relative to the city's debt policies. On page five, just a little bit of a, maybe an update in terms of interest rates. We like to do this, obviously, anytime where you're going to go out and borrow some funds. Interest rates in the market's still very competitive. What you'll see here is that on the left-hand side, we're showing this index that goes all the way back to 1980. And if you kind of visually take out that time period, that was abnormally low because of the pandemic and some of the unusual circumstances there, public market rates are still basically at historical lows. Recent financings for other AAA-rated jurisdictions have been between maybe 3.5% and 4% fixed rates for 2025 years. So it's a very, very good situation to be in. And you couple that with a literary loan that's at 3%, you're really in a good setup for purposes of moving forward with these capital programs. On the next page, we just give a proxy of the other side of the equation, which is your ability to earn very solid interest on the fund balance that you have in the bank. Your city treasurer obviously does an incredible job of managing those investments. And so what we really see in the interest rate environment is an ability to go borrow at very, very cost-effective interest rates and also invest both your fund balance and bond proceeds at rates that are much, much higher than they were several years ago. That works to the benefit of the taxpayers, works to the benefit of the budget, all obviously administered very, very well by the city treasurer. So with that, I'll pause there. We'll shift gears a little bit into stormwater here in the next couple of pages. Any questions so far here in terms of the general government portion of the CIP?
Counsel, any questions or comments at this point? Hearing none.
Very good. So on page seven, again, our stormwater utility fund. This, again, is run very much, we use that term enterprise fund because it is run like a business, wherein the revenues of the fund are fully paying for both the operations and the debt service. That means it is not a drain on the general fund. It doesn't impact our capacity to do things on the general fund, the same as our water and sewer. So Mayor and Council, you may recall several years ago, we implemented this program with some multi-year planning that basically allows us to borrow for those capital program, or excuse me, capital improvements for stormwater. This year, it's about $5 million that'll be borrowed via this program. We're going to go through a similar process as we did last year. We'll talk about that in the next couple of pages in terms of how we go about borrowing for the stormwater. Page eight here, again, always looking at a multi-year time period. So just like the general fund, just like water and sewer, doing projections to make sure that our stormwater fund remains self-sufficient, does not require any rate increases in this budget year. We're going to be relooking at those numbers. We'll likely need something in the next couple of years. It's been a number of years since we've had to do that, but nothing right now for purposes of this bond issue. So the bottom of the page, you see the CIP. About $5 million planned to be borrowed this year. That's what we'll take care of immediately. And then again, once this is kind of done, the summer into the fall, we revisit that planning, look at the costs, look at the operating costs, and update that planning. The way we go out and we do the stormwater funding, same as we've done the last several years, it's a little bit smaller dollar amount. So we've been bidding that to local, regional, national banking institutions is option number one. And we've also had the state's Virginia Resources Authority as an option as well. The first two issuances, we went through that process. The first year, the bank loan looked better, so we went and did the bank loan. Last year, VRA looked better, so we went and did VRA. This year, we'll be back to you in July with an assessment on those two things and be able to give you a recommendation. But again, all benefited by the fact that we have those AAA ratings gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of how we go out and get the financing to make sure it's, A, most cost-effective, and B, as flexible as we can make it. So with that, just a couple of time schedules. We're here this evening, it's June 5th. What we'll really be doing between now and your middle-July meeting is getting a number of these sort of logistical processes up and running. There'll be a public hearing on July 17th that'll authorize the general obligation bonds at roughly $10 million. There'll be a separate public hearing for the literary loan of $25 million. And we'll need a separate public hearing for the stormwater, that roughly $5 million. So that'll all happen at the July 17th meeting. We'll be talking with the rating agencies probably towards the latter part of July, with an eye towards being in the markets during the month of August, very similar timing to what we've had the last several years. For the stormwater side of things, again, going through a public hearing process for July 17th. The one nuance here is we're actually going to go do that bank bidding so that when we come back on July 17th, we'll have the results of those bank bids, be able to share that with you and make a recommendation in terms of do we go with the bank loan or do we move on and look to VRA as we did last year? To the extent VRA ends up being the option that makes the most sense, that process really plays out over the fall. We apply in August, they sell their bonds in the fall, and close basically by Thanksgiving. And so with that, Mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions. Really, the beginning of our process will be back in July with a series of actions.
I thank counsel. Questions or comments? Hearing none, Kyle. Thank you very much for your presentation, laying out exactly what we're going to be contending with as far as dollars are concerned, and we'll wait to hear, you know, what our options look like in the next 30 to 60 days.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. We do have one staff report this evening, which is regarding the City of Suffolk's local plan for Marcus Alert and Community Paramedicine Implementation Plan. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. City council may recall staff's initial presentation several months ago on the city's local plan for the Marcus Alert and Community Paramedicine Implementation Plan. I don't know how many times we could say that in a row.
Yeah.
Since that time, staff in coordination with the Western Tidewater Community Service Board has addressed many of the questions that were raised at that time, and is in position as of July 1st to go live. So with that, this evening, we have Stacy Young, Shelley Shelton from the Western Tidewater Community Service Board, Fire Chief Mike Baraki, Captain Willett from Fire and Rescue, and Acting Major Epperson from the Suffolk PD to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. I'm going to have the lucky part by introducing the second slide here by just saying that Stacy and Shelley from Western Tidewater will begin our presentation, actually Stacy will. And then Jesse will take over, Major Epperson will take over. And then after that, we'll have Captain Willett and Shelley take over, and then we'll have opportunity for questions. So at this point, Stacy, please come on up and hear.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us to come, members of city government, and into the citizens of Suffolk, because we're really excited to be able to talk a little bit about Marcus legislation and what we are doing to help our citizens of Suffolk. So I want to talk a little bit about what is Marcus Alert. It is a series of protocols that is designed between the interface of mental health and public safety to respond to individuals who are in crisis in a more effective and non-law enforcement-driven way. We all know right now that the state of mental health in our country, as well as in Virginia, is something that we all should be talking about and looking at. We know that the TDOs and ECO rates are astronomically high, and we also know that the need for education and to serve our consumers is a little bit different. As part of Western Tidewater, we are also the regional hub, so we offer a lot of the crisis programs and operate them on behalf of the region, which is the Greater Hampton Roads and Tidewater area, as well as the Western Tidewater catchment at Suffolk. So we have a great, unique opportunity to partner with amazing community partners with our police and Suffolk Fire and Rescue. And there are certain protocols that Marcus Alert legislation requires. And the first is how do we divert behavioral health crisis from 911 to the Regional Crisis Call Center, which is 988, a federal mandate, which is the equivalent of 911 for mental health. We have MOUs, which are with the Regional Crisis Call Center that I operate and oversee, which is a contract with our National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, where they can take calls that come in to our public safety answering points, our 911 centers that are low-risk mental health, and transfer those to 988 for a more appropriate response. And that protocol's in place, we're getting ready to go live with that. That is the first protocol. We have agreements between law enforcement and our mobile crisis teams. Our mobile crisis teams are mobile crisis responders. So for example, if law enforcement goes out and they see something that is behavioral health-driven, they can call and get a behavioral health response. And they can say, hey, we really don't need to be the responder here. Why don't we have some mental health clinicians come out on the scene? And then there's also particular protocols and training that our law enforcement partners, as well as our folks at Suffolk Fire and Rescue, are receiving to be able to deal with crisis more effectively. Our third is our actual Marcus Alert implementation, which you're going to hear a little bit more as we go, but that is a specialized response for communities for over 40,000 about how do we handle calls that are maybe a little bit more than just a mobile response, but not necessarily where it's an emergency custody order or something that requires law enforcement only. And so we have partnered to do our Marcus Alert co-response with a paramedic as well as a behavioral health responder to go out to those calls. So for example, a primocall for a Level 3 might be maybe someone who's done some superficial cutting or maybe is really intoxicated, and in the past, law enforcement might have had to take those folks into the hospital. Our team can go out and deal with them in their home and try to serve them in a least restrictive environment. The key to this really is the framework is how we all interface. We've all worked together as partners in the past, but doing this project has brought so much innovation and community collaboration, and we're going to be able to serve our citizens in so many unique ways. And our region has been leading the way for a long time. I'm actually proud to let the council know that the governor will actually be appearing next Thursday at Western Tidewater to sign some of the legislation right here, right now. And some of you guys will be getting invitations to that. And that's because of the innovative work that we do, not only on this project, but trying to work with serving our citizens in mental health a little bit more. So it is in partnership also with DCJAS and the Department of Behavioral Health, so we have to work together on how to work with our citizens in a little bit more effective way. So a little bit to bring up to date, we've been having discussions with Suffolk Police, Suffolk Fire and Rescue, and obviously at Western Tidewater to develop this co-response model. We chose the Community Paramedicine and Behavioral Health co-response model. That also didn't mean that law enforcement was off the table. Law enforcement was seen as a secondary resource to us. They had to update their policies and procedures. Again, they are still going to be our partners on this, but going with the spirit of what the Marcus Alert legislation was is that a behavioral health response should not be a law enforcement response primary. So even though law enforcement So even though law enforcement always will be our partner, they are not necessarily going to be always the front run. So in 2023, we partnered, we developed our co-response team, we started developing the Community Paramedicine Program, which you're going to hear a little bit more about, and then we developed the pan for the co-response with our 988 implementation for our PSAPs to be able to transfer calls. As a greater program for Western Tidewater, that also expands out the 988 transfers from 911 and back and forth to also Isle of Wight and Southampton, so that is our entire catchment area. We have provided training to our dispatchers. We've expanded our CIT efforts, which is Crisis Intervention Training, which is a 40-hour course for our first responders. We also made a one-day dispatch course focused just on our dispatch, on how to identify and work with individuals in a mental health crisis, as well as providing a four-hour training course for our dispatchers to identify these calls to be able to do transfers. So that's a little bit about what the spirit is, how we got here. If you can't tell, I'm pretty passionate about the program. I'm very excited for us to start in July, and I think we're going to be doing amazing things for the citizens of Suffolk, so I get to turn it over now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. I'm going to discuss now what we are doing from the police perspective on this and how we have been working on this for the last year and a half or so, and go in a little more detail of the different protocols that Shelley, excuse me, that...
I'm Stacy.
Stacy was discussing. So the first stop would be Protocol 1 for us. And Protocol 1, as originally stated, is kind of that diversion to our Level Ones and Level Twos from 911 to 988. So if our 911 center receives a call for service that falls into the category specifically of a Level 1, our dispatchers are trained, we've trained with Western Tidewater, we've then trained the trainer, and we've trained our dispatchers, and they go through the emergency medical dispatch process that was currently updated over the last week to go through a series of questions. And if that rises to that level of being just a Level 1 or even a Level 2, that will get a warm handoff over to 988, to the dispatchers, if you will, that are working the 988 center. And likewise, if there is a 988 call that comes in that is not a Level 1 or Level 2 and needs to come and be elevated to the police, they will actually transfer that to us. So we're waiting for those transfers back and forth as far as that Protocol 1 happens. Number 2 was actually have Protocol 2 is having that agreement, which will be discussed in the next couple of slides, between all stakeholders with Western Tidewater and police and fire with MOUs and what have you. And Protocol 3 is a lot where the law enforcement part of this rests. The police department, as well as communications, are CLIA certified. So with that, we are constantly looking at our policies anyway. So we had a lot of this already up to date, as we, like I said, we look at this every year. The biggest change is actually what the law says in diverting those calls away from our center or receiving those calls, and who's going to actually get dispatched. So that was where a lot of the heavy lifting and training came into this with our policies as it related to the actual diversion to 988. But some of the policies that we had to basically prove to the state that we, what our response to behavioral health calls is, our use of force policy and de-escalation, making sure they were in existence, implicit bias policies, officer wellness, and community policing, and our community policing from our communication center, as well as our police department. So we look at all those policies. We had to send them off as part of our plan to the state for them to approve them as well. And kind of going hand in hand with the policy aspect of it is the training that had to be shown. So our police officers, our communication operators, they go to CIT training. They're trained on very basic with the Marcus Alert process, with the Marcus Alert system. We've accomplished that in the last month and a half or so, specifically getting ready for rollout. Crisis Intervention Team training is very important to the police department. Our goal for the police department over the last approximately 10 years has been about 20% of the police department to be CIT certified. Currently, we're sitting about 42%, which is really good, because it's obviously double what we want to. And that training happens every quarter, and we've got our internal goal of sending as many officers to that as we can. Our communication operators, our goal is to be 100% CIT certified in that area. Currently, we're at 90%. The three dispatchers that are not certified there just graduated the academy in April, and they are scheduled to go in the coming quarters. And our dispatchers will also go to the eight-hour course. And about 50% of our dispatchers actually go to the dispatcher-specific, as well as the 40-hour course for additional training. About 97% of our officers are currently mental health first aid-trained right now. The officers that, the few officers that need that training there are kind of our newer lateral officers that we're having to catch up with our lateral program with the post-academy that'll be starting soon. We have 100% goal there, so we are, we should be there very shortly with that. Advanced Marcus Alert training, when that starts coming down the line, I think we have one officer that's signed up for some very specific advanced crisis training right now. We'll be sending our officers to that. We teach implicit bias training every year with the police department. We specifically teach fair and impartial policing. I'm one of the instructors for that, so we train that every year to ensure that our officers are treating everyone with the respect and dignity that they deserve, as well as our use of force and de-escalation training. We use a lot of the modern technology that we can to teach use of force and de-escalation, specifically with our Milo Simulator System, our new Axon Virtual Reality System, to have really, really progressive use of force and de-escalation training that's going on currently right now with this week's in-service. And our community outreach, we have a community outreach section within the police department that works really hard to get this message out on a regular basis through social media. We've been doing a lot of social media pushes over the last week or so, preparing for rollout. I know the slide says, "Working on a webpage related to Marcus Alert for the police and communications." That website went live, I believe, on Tuesday. Gives some very basic get-good information related to Marcus Alert as it relates to the services that can be provided by all different stakeholders, whether it be Western Tidewater, the state, 988, or police. And lastly, the one last thing we're working on to kind of steal some ideas from a neighboring jurisdiction, is where we advertise 911 on our vehicles as pushing the advertisement of 988 as well. So shortly, those, that rolling advertisement will be seen on our police vehicles in the coming weeks. We'll now turn it over to Fire and Rescue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Manager. So I'm excited to present to you MARK. So it's our new Community Paramedic Program. Before I do, I'd like to recognize how we are here, and that's Marcus Davis-Peters. So his name tag is on the legislation. He is why we are here, so I'd like to remember him. So as was mentioned, it is a co-response team, a collaboration with Western Tidewater Community Services Board and Suffolk Fire and Rescue. So what we're going to do is we're going to place a paramedic in a vehicle with a mental health clinician and start responding to 988 calls and also 911 calls that involve mental health. MARK stands for Medical Access and Resources for the Community. So we have two key components. The mandate is Marcus Alert, so that is our primary mission. We are going to place a unit in service 40 hours a week from 11 to 7:00, and we're going to respond to any calls for service for Marcus Alert. So either 988 or 911. Western Tidewater is the lead on this with their behavioral health clinician. However, they'll be partnered with the paramedic. A lot of times, mental health can present as a medical call, so we want to ensure that there is no medical issues going on, so they're basically going to prescreen them. They're also going to collaborate and work with that mental health clinician to figure out what's the best place for this person, because it's not necessarily in the back of a cop car or the emergency department. So that's the mandated part of it. We are also going to roll out a community-driven portion of it, where we are the lead, and Western Tidewater clinician will be with us to respond to calls in the community. So the men and women of Suffolk Fire and Rescue are great at their primary job, which is fighting fire and providing EMS. They actually just fought a fire 20 minutes ago, and, you know, no issues. So we're good at that. But what we're seeing is that we're getting calls for service that not, that don't necessarily meet 911 criteria. So we have people that are aging, they're at home, and they're unable to get around. They have mobility issues, they're food scarce. Something's going on, and they have no one to, no one to help, no one to help them. So they call 911. We send fire trucks to turn ACs up. We send fire trucks to pick people up off the ground when there's really no reason for them to fall down. So how can we fix these issues without sending a fire truck out there, without sending an ambulance out there, taking up that apparatus as time? So what we want to do is be a third option. If somebody calls 911 and I show up in my ambulance, I have two options for you, regardless of whatever the complaint is. I've got two options. I'm going to take you to the hospital, or I can leave you at home. There's no other option right now. So we want to be the third option. We want to connect these people who need resources with resources in the community. There's plenty of them out there, they just don't know how to connect, and we want to be that connection. So also, they'll have, many times, these people will have a mental health aspect, even if it's not true diagnosed mental health issues, being food scarce, wondering where your check's coming from. That's going to be a stressor, just stress in general. So that clinician's going to be there to help us work through these issues with the paramedic. So we have two parts, an aging in place, talked about the falls, people need durable medical equipment, prevent the falls. You know, they call us to pick them up off the ground, why'd you fall? Let's fix that. Go in, make sure the home is good. Do a home risk assessment, make sure the home is safe for them so that they can live in their home as long as they choose to. And then we also have an MVP program, Multi-Visit People. So we have a lot of people who love to call 911 for reasons that are not 911 at all. We have a person in the community, I actually just pulled the numbers today for this presentation. We've taken him to the hospital 41 times so that he can get a cab ride back home out of the city. We take an ambulance out of service for an hour just to give him a ride to overseen, 41 times. So our program meets the Marcus Alert mandate. I'm sorry, this is Shelley's turn. I changed it.
I was going to let you continue. So as far as our MARK program, it is an innovative program that meets the Marcus Alert mandate. It is enhancing the capabilities as to better serve our community and its citizens. It evolved with the mission to respond to the community's needs more effectively. So what we have is is going to be stationed out of our Crisis Receiving Center that is located on Godwin Boulevard. It will have a garage that is locked and it's kept in as long as the, as well as the medical equipment there at Godwin. And then we will have the behavioral health clinician paired and work in tandem with the paramedic. And then vice versa, when we're going to our MARK calls, our co-response or medical access, then our clinician is working tandem with our paramedic. So the goals that we have met so far, you have heard CIT training, Crisis Intervention training, that is continuous and ongoing, and most likely will be, you know, never go away. Our vehicle was purchased, we did purchase a 2024 Ford Expedition and is currently being outfitted, and it will be a licensed medical vehicle. It will have lights and will respond to emergency calls. It will have lights, it'll have all the radio equipment, just like any other emergency vehicle, and that is currently being done right now. We have purchased a software program that Western Tidewater has paid for the first full year of it, and after that, Suffolk Fire and Rescue will take over that. That is a software program that we will work and we will get referrals to know these people for the MARK program, as well as for the co-response team on the mental health side as well. The salaries are being supported for the paramedic and the clinician by Western Tidewater Community Services Board. We are supporting their salaries. And then the Marcus Alert Coordinator for Suffolk Fire and Rescue is being supported by the city. We do have our monthly meetings with Suffolk PD, Suffolk Fire and Rescue, and Western Tidewater, the first Tuesday every month. We join together, we talk about where we are, what needs to be done, have we met our goals for the state and DCJS. This past Tuesday, we did invite Isle of Wight, Southampton, and Franklin to join these meetings, because they are required to follow Protocol 1, which is the 988 diversion. So we had invited them as of this Tuesday, so they will start attending those meetings as well, because they fall under our catchment area. And then we have a stakeholders meeting with community partners quarterly. So that's where we can have Centerra employees come, we have DSS come, multiple other community partners do join this. We have the city attorney that joins in on that meeting, the magistrate, and we discuss where we are in the future of where it needs to go. Ray?
I'm back. So as I said, we want to be that connection. We want to get people the resources that they need, and there's plenty of them out there. We've got social services, we've got the food banks, churches run these huge food banks so we can get food to people, senior services, hospice, Centerra's reached out to me, Western Tidewater's got a coalition that we're a part of. So there are plenty of people out there that have, they want to help people, they just don't know how or who they are, and we know who they are, believe me. They'll call us. They invite us into their homes, so we know exactly who they are. This program is sponsored, is supported by our OMD, Dr. Carl Wenzel. It's innovative, it's compliant to expand our resources to citizens in need. This is, this is the cutting edge, this is where EMS is going. We, you know, as I said, we're great at the job of you have, if you're having a heart attack, if you get in a wreck, we, we're great at that, but that's reactive care. We want to be proactive. We want to keep you out of the hospital, safe in your home as long as you can. So as mentioned, our go-live date is July 1st, 2024. We have two positions, the Marcus Alert Coordinator, that is me. So, Mr. Manager, thank you for the job. It is a captain's position funded by the city. I'm overseeing the program. So my responsibility is to reach out, to liaison with everybody, to get this program running, make sure we meet Office EMS regulations, make sure the vehicle's compliant, figure out where our money's coming from, make sure everything is good, the equipment's good, coordinate with external agencies, create our care plans for people that we identify that need them. Something very important I want to point out is that we do not duplicate services. We are mandated by the Office EMS that if there is somebody out there that can do something such as home healthcare, such as food banks, if there's somebody that can do that, they need to do that. We cannot take over patients. That is not our intent. Our goal is to go into somebody's house, evaluate them, set up a treatment plan for them, for lack of a better term, and then in 60 days, turn them over to somebody else who can continue this care. We don't want to own patients, we want to get them the resources they need. So that is my, that is my job. We are also going to put a paramedic co-responder in the vehicle. We have a few in the audience right here, gentleman right there, Ben Riendo, he is going to be the 40-hour paramedic clinician or co-responder in the vehicle. Obviously, vacation, sick leave and whatnot. So we have Lieutenant Thompson, Lieutenant Coltrane right here, along with others that are trained. They're ready to step in. They volunteered for this. They came to me and said they want to do this. They've heard about the program, they heard about what it can do, and they want to be a part of it. I didn't have to recruit anybody, they came to me. So this is, this is how it's being received in our department, and if you, if you can't tell, I'm excited about it. So as we talked about, two different responses, Marcus Response, 988, 911, mental health calls. We want to go out there, we want to, we want to help the police, get the, get the people who are in crisis away from police, get them to the resources that they need. Something that's unique about this program, I talked about, the hospital may not be the best place for these people. So if somebody is in crisis and they are compliant and they are nonviolent, our, our vehicle, I skipped right over it, our vehicle, that's the last drawing of it, is done by one of our firefighters, Lieutenant Turner. So our vehicle's going to have the ability to transport them to the Crisis Receiving Center on Godwin Boulevard. So we're going to completely bypass the emergency department, we're going to take them to somewhere where they can get 23-hour care stabilization and get them somewhere else if they need to go somewhere else. But we're going to bypass, we want to, we don't want to take them to the hospital. We want to get them somewhere where they can get better care. Another, we don't want to take them there either. Yes, sir, agreed. So that's the Marcus Response. And then, like I said, Community Paramedicine, we've got our aging in place, we've got our MVPs. We also got some other opportunities that we want to leverage while we're out there. So opioids, that's a big discussion, we want to be involved with that. We see these, we see the people who overdose on the 911 side, we know who they are, so we can do a follow-up with them. Make sure that, you know, if they're resuscitated and now they're awake and they're talking, let's follow up with them, 24 hours, 48 hours. How are you doing? Is there anything you need? Hospice resources, they've reached out to us, so we can support them. Chronic illness follow-up, outreach and education, and then something else that we've, we've added to our, our goals is to support Project Lifesaver. So we're going to be out there, and a lot of times, the people that are enrolled in Project Lifesaver are the ones that we're trying to age in place, we're trying to make them safe, so it goes hand in hand. So we're going to be involved with Project Lifesaver as well. I have one side, and then Shelley's going to take over. That one, that picture on the far right, that is Gelata, that's the software she was talking about. So that is how we're going to get referrals. It's a software that has a public-facing webpage where anybody could go in and insert information that will come directly to me, so I can evaluate this referral and see what, what, what do they need? We're going to send the car out, Ben's going to go out, do a site visit, and figure out what's going on with this person, what, what do they need? So initially, we're going to just do it internally with our own Suffolk Fire and Rescue employees, because they're already emailing me, they, you know, when is your program starting? Are you taking patients? They're, they're ready to go, they know who needs help, because they care about these people, they want them to get help. So that's what Gelata exists, it's right there. So we're going to, we're going to start internal, and then, as she talks about with the marketing, make it external. Do you have somebody that you care about that you want to get checked out? We'll come in and do a home health assessment, home risk assessment. We'll come in and do a home health assessment, home risk assessment, make sure the carpets are good. Do you have smoke detectors? Do you have any trip hazards? We'll come in and check it out. If you need help, we'll see if we can get connected to help. So that's my part, the rest is.
Yep, so the next part is mine. So as far as marketing for the MARK and the co-response team, we do have a plan to develop a QR code, and when you scan that QR code, it will link to Western Tidewater CSV's main page, but it will have its own page within where it will go in depth on what the paramedicine program is, as well as the Marcus Co-Response Program. Um, once we're up and running, we have pictures, we'll have live photos, we'll have pictures of the vehicle once it's done, um, pictures of our crew, team members on there, and explaining all about it. We are planning to purchase some magnets that can go on vehicles. So, um, I know I'm curious, they put them on the news every day, there's a QR code a lot of the time on the news, and you're curious, so you scan it to see what it is. As well as, um, business cards that people can pass out to citizens, so our fire and rescue and our law enforcement can pass out, so they're more educated on our, uh, community paramedicine, as well as our co-response. Um, brochures that can be passed out, they can be placed in local doctors' offices that can help advertise the community paramedicine, and as well as stickers. And then in our next stakeholder meeting, um, we will ask them, hey, you have any ideas on where we can put some of these items for advertisement as well? Or any of their needs or suggestions? We're always open to suggestions and feedback as well. Any questions?
Thank you, we'll stand by for any questions, Mayor, thank you.
Council questions, comments, Councilman Fawcett?
First off, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you that is standing there right now. And the reason for that is it's gonna take a very special person or group to be able to help in this crisis-type situation. This has been, this is a fantastic program that's getting ready to launch because we know we have people out there that are right on the edge or maybe have some issues, and it could encompass a lot of different things. You know, and it, this might keep them from going in a direction that they may, you know, I don't know how this is gonna intertwine with, if, if you get them before something happens, that's the key. But if, if something happens and they go too far, of course, law enforcement comes in on it, you still need to treat the mental part of it first. And I don't know if that happens, and then they get referred or whatever to, whatever the issue might be, the crime that may have happened, because it does twine sometimes together. And I can't, I think there's gonna be a few challenges, but I think you guys have got a, a pretty good fix on how you want to kinda make a stab at this, because I heard you know some people already. You know some different folks that are in issues, you know, like in an instance, uh, where he talks about opioids. You know, we know that, that kind of thing goes on, and you, in some cases, you may have to resuscitate the patient if they're not completely out of it when you come to them, but that's just an example there. And I want to see how this is gonna work because this, I, I love the passion, I love it, because you gotta have that in order to make this thing work. But we have a lot of folks out here that are just sometimes, they're just lost, they just don't know where they need or want, you know, they, they're starving, starving for some help. So, I can't find a better way than to have a group, and I, I want to applaud everybody there, but you know, our fire and police are always in the middle of everything before it's over with, because they're part of our public safety that revolves. But Western Tidewater Clinic is phenomenal. You folks are doing a great job at doing what you're doing. If we can keep somebody from ending up at Western Tidewater, or ending, ending up in oversea for a number of days, and, you know, whether they need to be transferred to a more, um, you know, mental facility, or more, a facility that's more equipped to operate beyond your scope, if we can't get that help locally, then you've got some time to help that, making, making that thing happen to go there. Because people crash, they, they just, people sometimes just come to their end of, they just, they just don't know what else to do. So, um, I'm not even gonna doubt the fact that y'all are not gonna stab this thing hard. You're gonna be, you're gonna be handling this thing very, very hard. And what all of us have to do, whether it be the government and our city, is support your initiative. Support you to help you and help the people, the external, to understand what you're trying to do. You're not trying to take somebody away, you're not trying to lock them up, you're not trying to put them in a mental institution and, you know, but reassure them of things that can help them, not only because you're doing the in-house inspection and seeing whether they're okay. I mean, I, I listened to a lot of times where fire goes because someone has fallen down, can't get out, they got out of bed, they can't get back in. Those are a lot of things that can be fixed without, you know, sending a big amount of expense, you send a fire engine and a medic unit and, you know, that's a big expense rolling down the road where this could really help that cause. I mean, this, I, I could go on and on, but this thing is fantastic. Anybody that thinks it's not, they need to just sit back and look at it and watch it for a while. And if, you know, anybody that's been in the business of fire and, and, and police and, and even you clinicians, if, if you haven't been there, you don't know what you don't know. So, uh, I want to thank you, I'm sorry for taking up the time, but I'm, I'm very compassionate about this as well because I, I've seen things that could have changed the trajectory of what's gonna happen without this, and we haven't really had this. It's, it's been kind of a mixed bag on how we're gonna get to where we're going, but I think you, you got your hands right on the pulse button, and I'm gonna listen and watch it, hope you'll come back and tell us some good things that are happening to give us some kind of a measurement of where you're at and what you've done, and it can be done in a lot of ways, you know? So, I'm done, I'm, I didn't mean to take all the time up, but I, I'm just so thankful that y'all are out there doing what you're doing, I couldn't thank you enough. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'm gonna be very brief, but this coordinated effort is remarkable. As a community, it's something our community has needed for so long, and I, I think we're gonna be an inspiration for the rest of the area. Um, I, I, you know, I get emotional, but I'm, I'm, it's something we need so desperately. We have a wonderful police force, we have a wonderful fire department, and hooking into Western Tidewater, and what we can do for the people of this city and for the people that need our services, I'm excited, I'm ecstatic, actually. I think for our city, this is just, we are so blessed, so let's make it work. The only thing I'm worried about is getting the word out. People need to know that it's there and know what 988 represents and what they can get from it and what you guys can do for them. So I, I don't, we are, this council, I think the whole council is well behind you and well behind seeing this very successful. So thank you, thank you for today, and thank you for what you're gonna do for our community, we really appreciate it.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, obviously, I want to echo the, the comments of Councilman Fawcett and Johnson, I, I think it's a great program, it's long overdue. Um, I, you know, one of my questions when this was brought up before was, somebody that needs to make a call, do they, do I call 988, do I call 911, you know, what, what exactly do I do? So I was really excited to hear about the fact that there's the ability to transfer calls between one agency to the other because that way, it doesn't make any difference who they call, hopefully they're gonna get the appropriate, um, response. And then my sort of follow-up question to that is, once a responder gets to the situation can, I mean, obviously, I guess the response can be flipped, so that if a law enforcement officer shows up and says, well, you know, this is really not as bad as how it was presented, we, we can call in a mental health professional to take over the response, correct?
Ye- yes, um, there actually will be a dedicated transfer line between the P S A and our, um, National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which filters the calls to like our mobile responders. So there's actually a direct line to them that they know, hey, this is Suffolk PD calling and what that means. Also, to answer your question about, um, education as well, we do have a community line because 988 is area code routed, which is one of the challenges that we've talked about, that is also answered by our National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, and we have been advertising that on all of our mobile crisis information, just as much as we have 988 to say, you know, if you don't live necessarily in a 757, 804, or kind of jurisdiction in Virginia, um, that you can call this line and do that as well. And we have started our efforts to also expand some of the marketing and education with like marine police and state police and some of our ancillary, um, agencies that we work with in terms of partnership, and of course, our Department of Social Services and other key community stakeholders. Uh, you know, with any program, we're gonna have some kinks in the beginning, so I always tell folks, we're probably not pushing the marketing until we get a few cases under our belt to sort of say, okay, we had to pivot here a little bit, we had to dance over here a little bit. Um, and then I think once we get that really fluid moment, you're gonna see a lot more mass marketing, um, with us, and we always welcome those suggestions. I mean, you, you, we saw the tourism people, and I'm sitting over here going, how do we tap into those resources to help us with some marketing? That was phenomenal! So, you know, we welcome that support, we know that marketing is going to be a big piece of it. What you will see is, um, you know, full disclaimer, we're gonna try to get a couple calls under our belt because the worst thing you can do is advertise a program, and we haven't gotten our kinks worked out, and then people have a bad experience, and you guys all know that just takes one bad experience. So we want to make sure it's very fluid and, um, get it out and get it rolling in multiple platforms. We've also had some luck with some of our social media and our news folks, um, because we are housing this at our Godwin location, which will be a one-stop crisis shop. We got a special grant to build the shed that is gonna have it, we out, we are building that shed to expand, we did not build it as a one-bay, hint, 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 we have it being built as a two-bay because our goal is to expand this, as well as to be able to lock up, um, different things, and as well as what's in that one-stop shop, and why this is so important, and why it's so important that they can bring people to Godwin Boulevard, which is different, is we were gonna have our twenty-three hour receiving center there where people can stay. When we get our construction underway, we will have a fourteen-day crisis stabilization unit upstairs. We have access to same-day access if you need to be fast-tracked into services three days a week at that location. Our emergency services department that does the pre-admission screenings for hospitalization eventually will be at that location, as well as our CIT transfer site and additional other support. So that is another reason and, um, why it is so important that we have this collaboration to serve people in a holistic, um, way. So, yeah, we're all excited, if you can't tell. I hope I answered your question, and probably Ben some.
Well, you, you did answer my, uh, question, and one of the things that I'm very concerned about, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a learning curve as this thing unfolds and people become more comfortable in their roles and what they're, what they're doing, but after listening to you tonight, one of the things I'm really concerned about is your enthusiasm level. And, and I might be conflating two situations, so if I am, uh, I apologize, but will this, i- i- if the police respond and they take somebody to the Western Tidewater Clinic to, to your facility, I, I think when they take patients like that to the hospital, somebody from law enforcement has to stay with that person until the, the situation is resolved one way or the other. If they, if the police take somebody to your facility, will that relieve them, because they're turning them over to another licensed agency, will that relieve them of the, uh, responsibility for, for staying with that person?
So a yes and a no, and, and the fact that if the person is willing to stay, come to our services, and is voluntary, and is not under an emergency custody order, then we will take them in, and if they escalate to a point where we need to call our law enforcement partners back, then we will do that. If they are under an emergency custody order at this point, um, we don't have conservatives of the peace or any other jurisdiction at this point, that is something we are exploring to have on that location, uh, they would have to remain in custody with them at that point because it is a code mandate and, and we don't have another entity. However, we are looking at, because of workforce shortage issues with our law enforcement partners, and unfortunately, our behavioral health responders, um, at looking at what we might be able to do around conservatives of the peace, so, uh, maybe in another six months, you might see my crazy purple hair back in front of you asking about what can we do to get approval around conservatives of the peace, because that's limited power for authority. But that is stuff that we are trying to move towards, um, and recognizing that. The other good thing about the mental health side is most of these programs I've talked about fall under my roof, which means, um, no offense, I get to kinda say sometimes to one of my programs to another one, you will do this? And we're gonna have hopefully more fluidity in the care and the behavioral health side, uh, where in the past, you talked about, you know, hospital and home, in the past, for behavioral health, it was home and hospital, just two different kinds, right? It's just a different hospital. Now we have mobile response, we have the Marcus, we have the twenty-three hour, and we have a continuum of care. So during that point, if anytime we can release custody, that is ultimately the goal.
Thank you very much for that.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, just a comment, uh, I can see how excited all eight of you are that are standing there about this program, and I think everyone that hear about it will be just as excited as you are. And I think this is a great tool that the city has been needing for a long time, and I'm just as excited as you all are to see this being implemented here in our city, so we're looking forward to being a partner with you all as much as we can, to do whatever we can, because there are issues of mental health out here in Suffolk. So we need to take, do everything we can to try to address, so, so thank you all again for what you're doing.
Vice Mayor, word?
Yes, I, I commend you all for being serious about this mental illness, you know, you're taking it serious, and I'm an advocate of that when you see things that escalated, don't have to escalate you, that expertise get in it, and you know, some of the fearful police officers, but now they gotta understand that you are out to help them, and the parent or the, the person that's involved know what y'all do, instead of worrying about, you know, harm, being harmed. So I'm very s- serious about that, and I'm just gonna get a little greedy, chief. We building a new, we need to build a new fire station up there, any possible way we can have something up there like that, or, well, you seen, I seen one truck, we get another truck, I'll be, I don't know, you know, you got a lot of things going up there.
We're willing to always explore expansion, and I'll work the city manager on that next week.
Okay. All right, thank you all again, God bless you.
Vice Mayor said he was gonna write the check, so don't worry about it. I'll go ahead and wrap it up, I'm not gonna, um, be too redundant, but obviously, this is a, gonna be a huge asset for our citizens, it's going, you know, I'm trying to come up with a couple words, I think the thing, first thing is impressive, it's really impressive, the level of training that you've been able on all three levels, from the fire department, police department, uh, Western Tidewater Conservatives, Services Board, the amount of training that you have, you know, listen to the numbers that the captain gave us as far as how many individuals are already qualified, our 911 operators, our, um, our, our paramedics. And what else is impressive is not only the training levels, but the level of collaboration that there's already been is huge. I mean, I'm watching, I like to watch people, you know, from here, I get to watch people, and I come in, kind of into people business, and when I see one of you talking, I see heads nodding up and down, and that's a good thing. That means everybody's on the same page. Everybody in there's got a little head knob, some of them a little bit more than others, but I say, yeah, that's it, that's it, that's it, and we're looking at three separate agencies, and they're all on the same page. So I want to thank you for that, I know it's, it's not an easy process, uh, it is gonna be a work in progress, because I'm sure you're gonna have situations come up, you know, if y'all are in the emergency business, you, you can relate to better than I can, there's a difference between conceptualizing it, seeing it on the book, and then what happens in real life, some of those things that you just don't count on. But as it's also been mentioned, I'm sure you've got the support of everybody up here on this dais, um, in addressing any of the issues that you have. So thank you very much, and we look forward to, uh, you serving our citizens, thank you. We do have several motions this evening, our first one is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July seventeen, twenty twenty-four, to receive public comment on a second amendment to the Waylonville Communications Tower lease and Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, and a motion Wireless. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July 17, 2024 City Council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds Series 2024. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July 17, 2024 City Council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of stormwater revenue bonds. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Motion is second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July 17, 2024 City Council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds as evidence for a Virginia Literary Fund loan. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And our last, oh, next to last motion is a motion to reschedule the City Council meeting from Wednesday, July 3, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. to Tuesday, July 2, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. Councilman Johnson?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And our last motion is a motion to schedule a City Council work session for Tuesday, July 2, 2024, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilman Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, we do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Mayor, each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers Shall Limit Their Remarks to the Policies, Services, and Affairs of City Government," and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer, and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Alfonza Cargill, 105 Brown Lane, representing the Chukataq Civic League Regarding Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak about development, and I'm not against it. And I want that to be first and foremost. What I am against about development is the way that it's proceeding. And the problem that we see that you don't see, and what I would like to bring to your attention, is a couple of incidents that we've had, a couple of Fridays, back to back. One Friday, the accident that we had on 258 caused a backup that basically landlocked Chukataq. You couldn't go to Windsor. You couldn't even go up 460. I couldn't go up Ever's Road, because traffic was backed up from 460 all the way to Ever's Bridge. Couldn't go to Windsor. I would have to go to Smithfield. And my concern about our development is we're not doing anything for the infrastructure. And poor little Chukataq is landlocked. We're getting it from Isle of Wight. They're building toward Suffolk. We're building toward them. And we are caught in the middle on two-lane highway. And I think, like I said, that I'm not against development, but we need to do something about our infrastructure. Because if we are unfortunate enough to have to evacuate, we're going to be in serious trouble. Isle of Wight is closer to James River Bridge. They are closer to the other areas of access of moving out of this area than we are. And it's something that you all need to think about. And like I say, I'm not against development. I just think it needs to be looked at in a different light. I really would say that I appreciate living in Suffolk. And where I am, I wouldn't rather be anywhere else in Suffolk. So that's a testament to the city. But at the same time, we need to look at our development a little bit closer, and think about the safety of the citizens who have been pouring their dollars into our coffers for years. And I'm not going to stay up here a long time, because I think my point can be taken by every one of you members here and everybody in the audience, because if you've been stuck in it, you know that people's driving habits have not improved. They will cut you off. And I know a lot of people didn't go to work those Fridays, because you couldn't get a break. Nobody would, nobody would allow you to get in. If you needed to make a turn, and somebody was in front of you, you just stuck. So a lot of folks called in to work late. Some people didn't go to work. But that was just a minor thing. And it's not going to get any better. So I'm asking all of you to think about this real hard, give it some serious consideration, because we need a way out. And we don't need it 20 years from now either. At the rate that climate change is progressing, the hotter it gets, the more storms, hurricanes that we're going to have, we may even have more tornadoes. All of these things factors into the safety of our people being able to get to a safe and higher ground. I would like to thank council members, the mayor, and the audience that we have here tonight for giving me the opportunity to bring something to your attention that desperately needs to be looked at. And I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Our next speaker is Roosevelt Jones, 5809 Hawk Lane, representing the Oakland Chukataq Civic League Regarding Stormwater.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of the city council. I'm sure you all know me. This is not my first time being with you. But I'm going to stand before you this afternoon and let you know of the dissatisfaction from the results that I have been getting from the city council. My daddy told me one time before, a man must stand it on. And I'm standing before you tonight. And, and for clarification, that had been surfaced around the community that when the Greater Oakland Chukataq Civic League come before you, we come to intimidate or harass. That's not true. We come to you because of the dissatisfaction and the promises that you have presented and have given us. And we're tired of it. We come to you tonight in numbers. First of all, I'm not even speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the community, as a community activist. I'm a retired union official, and I've seen a lot of promises from management. And the only way you can resolve them is to have grievances. And so we are grieving. The city allowed, I'm just speaking once for myself, I'm not going to be for five minutes, but I'm going to make some points. The city allowed development, developers to run a easement through my yard. It's chaos. Stormwater is what we are talking about tonight. And Mother Nature going to do its part. But the city has to do its part, too. City has to do its part, too, the council, which I'm referring to. We have city employees right up and down different areas of the community, Oakland Greater Chukataq area, knowingly that we have problems with ditches. And you have the resource to correct these things, but you don't. We have families living in the Chukataq, Greater Oakland Chukataq, Sandalotum Civic League. We can not even have family visitors in their own holidays. Why? Because they can't flush the stews, bathrooms. This is because God has sent us His work when He sent us water. But it's a way that the city can help relieve this. We have resources. I talked to Robert Lewis, and I'm going to call out some names. City manager came to my house, and he told me, I'm going to get back with you in 10 days. Boy, I don't know how he counting. 10 days is 10 days with me. And if you all know, I told you all, and when I was president of the Civic League 2008, and I told you, if you make promises with me, I look for it. I look for it. And until we make changes, and you make changes, things are never going to change. And we coming before you when, when we feel like we need to come to you. Problem, we cannot get answers from the, what you call these people that come around when you have complaints? Lost for words. Mike, you know what I'm talking about, the people that you give complaints when you have inspectors. Boy, I'll tell you, I got it. Inspectors. We cannot even get involved with inspectors anymore. I called inspectors Friday, three times, and each time I called them, I'm getting a computer. Computer are doing your jobs now. But we cannot talk to people personally. Health Department, I tried to get them to no advance. But I want to thank you, and I want you to know that I stand on my own. Nobody influenced us. But we are coming to you tonight as a group, looking for some type of resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wade Bieber, 5646 Godwin Boulevard, representing the Chukataq Civic League Regarding Sewer.
Good evening, members of the council. I am here to discuss issues faced by myself and my neighbors related to the city's planned expansion of sewage services to Brown's Road just off Godwin, north of Suffolk, approaching Chukataq. The planned expansion of city sewer begins at Brown's Road and extends north. However, significant water table issue affecting septic systems. Septic system reliant homes exist just south of Brown's Road, and we need city sewer service. The water table of my home is incredibly high. My home was built in the 1940s and is on a septic system. I purchased this home December of '22, and had the septic inspected and pumped. It functioned excellently per my inspection report. However, in October of '23, after significant rain, the entire lot next to our home was flooded. I had to step through ankle-deep water to get into my truck, and we had to pump our septic system again, because the leach field was under the water table. That pump is after less than a year that it was pumped previously and inspected to be working well. I believe it was not just that the field couldn't drain, but rather that the system took on groundwater because of how saturated it was. This canon does lead to issues of wastewater being inadequately managed, and wastewater can escape to the surface when a system is overloaded because of soil drainage issues. We need to protect our watersheds by improving the management of wastewater in my area with the expansion of the city sewer system. It would be an error of planning if a known issue of septic malfunctions in a notoriously flooded area in this community was passed over to start sewage services just one street over from my home. Not only is my home affected, but citizens in the next two streets of my community, on Willow and Everett, both proximal to Suffolk from my home and Brown's, are being bypassed in the sewer planning. And to be clear concerning other management plans, while stormwater management would be an improvement, these methods only go so far. Septic systems were put in decades ago, and I know mine is likely 50 years old, and I believe it's on its second leach field. These systems in my area will not run forever, and failed leach fields cannot be replaced indefinitely. All my neighbors have the same issues, and the solution is to include our homes on this expansion of city sewer, because septic is no longer serving our homes adequately or safely as it concerns the potential for water contamination. Please preserve the habitability of my community that my family lives in by extending sewer service to us in this stage of planning. I also, to go off topic slightly, I'm an RN at Obese's Emergency Department, and I also was incredibly excited and had a hard time staying quiet while they were presenting their Marcus plan. So I'm also stoked on that as well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Our final speaker this evening is Herbert Snelling, 115 Lakefront Drive, representing self, excuse me, representing the Cove Point neighborhood regarding Dollar Tree.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor. We have concerns about the Dollar Tree that's entering right at the entrance of our neighborhood. Our biggest concern is, is at that intersection currently, with the amount of traffic that flows up and down that highway, it's very difficult to even make a turn into the neighborhood, and you have to cross the lane of traffic. Putting that in there, we expect it's going to be even more difficult, because they're proposing to bring the traffic going into the Dollar Tree into the entrance of our neighborhood, and then going in off of that entrance into the, the business area, and also exiting out of that business area. They currently tell us that they are not intending to, because it's been addressed to them about putting an entrance off of 58 into their business area. It does not make a lot of sense. The area is increasing all the time, and it's evident by the increased size of that highway that's going through there, that to get in and out of a neighborhood without some sort of traffic control, which we've also, it's been proposed to put a traffic light up there to allow control of traffic, being able to get in safely and out of it safely. That's also been denied. None of this makes sense. Right now is a good time. In fact, I think the best time, while they're doing this work, to make preparations for which is inevitable, that we are going to need from this point on, as I see it, and definitely in the future, to allow safe entry and exit out of the neighborhood. That's basically what we have to, basically what we have to address right now is the traffic lighting going in and out of the neighborhood. Currently, right now, with all the work that's going on, we have vehicles that are coming in there that are doing construction work, making U-turns and stuff into that entrance now, and bringing rocks and dirt and all that stuff at the entrance. So it's, it's just a total mess. So to be a resident of this city for the last 15-plus years, and having built some of the houses that are in the neighborhood that, that I currently reside in, and decided this is a city that I would prefer to live in as well, I bought a lot that was, became available while I was doing the building in the neighborhood. while I was doing the building in the neighborhood. So anyway, I'd like you to have consideration over the issues that I brought up, and would appreciate your thoughts. Thank you so much.
Pardon me, Mayor, we do have additional speakers. Shamar Wilkins, 807 Garfield Avenue, representing self regarding the criminal justice system.
Good evening. I want to start by saying I'm not being disrespectful if I don't look at you. I have anxiety, and I have a lot of stuff that I have to say, so I'm just reading off of the page. Good evening to all that is in attendance to this meeting. I'm addressing this council today due to currently being falsely accused of a crime that I did not commit, and my rights are currently being violated. I have told the prosecution of the Commonwealth of Virginia what was going on, and she is allowing the investigators to lie under oath in court, which is perjury, violation of the court. They have currently withheld evidence in my case, which is a breitie violation of the court. I have tried to contact the respectable agencies that overseeing the departments, and I have been denied every which way. I have contacted the year office, Mr. Manager, and also the office of the mayor multiple occasions, and was told he has no authority over the fire department. And I am demanding, as a United States citizen and also a temporary citizen of Virginia, that you uphold the duties of your office and overseeing, overseer and CEO of the government body. I will close this. Today I was just served with the subpoena, excuse me, today I was just served with the subpoena before I came to your council. The subpoena states that I was, you did unlawfully cause telephones or digital papers that's not owned by the accused to ring or otherwise signal with or without the intent to communicate with the intent to annoy a person. Today, since about 12 o'clock, I've been getting phone calls from your city manager's office, I mean, not city manager's office, excuse me, from your fire marshal's office. They're not answering, they're not calling to say anything, they're just calling me and hanging up. Anytime I call back to figure out what's going on, I am being told either they can't speak to me because the fire chief or the fire marshal told them to not speak with me because they are the ones that's persecuting me, and the investigator is the one that brought the charges against me, or they're just not answering the phone at all. I have continuously, and this been going on for almost two years now, this happened back in March of 2023. It is now Wednesday, 5th of June, and I'm still going through this. I have not yet went to trial regarding this issue. Constantly, over and over, I'm on my fourth attorney because every attorney that I have had either said that I either might as well go to jail, just plead guilty and go to jail because I have no case, or they told me that they're not gonna represent me. I am currently about to go back to court for a motion to withdraw because an attorney said that, I'm not, know if you're familiar with Mr. Matthews, that he currently just died recently. And he was a great friend of Mr. Matthews. And Mr. Matthews was my last attorney. So that attorney is now withdrawing because Mr. Matthews died. And I quote, his reason is that he don't think that I had any physical hand in his death, but I had some cause in his death. Now, I don't know what that is because he will not speak to me, he won't even answer the phone. When I got the subpoena, I even tried to call him to figure, to notify him what was going on, and nothing was done. Now, when I got the subpoena today, outside in the hallway, I was told that I was not allowed to speak today. No reason, they didn't tell me why. The officer over there, gentleman, told me, couldn't tell me why, nobody could tell me. Also told me that I was trespass from this building. Constantly, this government, not saying you guys, but the agencies that's under you guys are weaponizing your law. Now, I don't understand what the intent to annoy is when someone is calling you and you are calling that person back to try to figure out why that person is continuously calling you. I have four missed calls from that person. Now, I called the 911 operator to find out exactly what was going on and what my legal standing is to where I need to contact to get this issue resolved, and I was told that I had to file a complaint with the police. I then filed a complaint with the police. They in return told me that they have no jurisdiction. This is what I'm constantly being met with every time I call a public official in this city, either being told I don't have the jurisdiction, or that is not my authority, or it's just not in my job description. I don't know exactly who I need to speak to and how I need to speak to. That's why I came here today to speak before you regarding this issue. From what I read, because I took all day reading your ordinance, bylaws, and everything, city manager's office is the one that oversees the fire department. I know my time is ending up, so I will end well. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and you have a great day. Thank you very much.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we move to new business, I'd like to ask the manager, if he would, to possibly give us a very, very brief update as to the improvements that are scheduled for the Oakland Chukka Tuck area. It has been quite some time and a long road. If you could just address that, please.
Well, there's, of course, I want to be clear that there's different areas in Oakland Chukka Tuck that we're addressing. The project that we have that through the ARPA that covers Hawk, Ren, I'm missing a couple of other streets, and that's one area. And that project went out to bid, bids are due on July 3rd. Now, that's water sewer and storm, and I believe it's in the area where Mr. Jones's house is, what is in the area where Mr. Jones is living. Now, I met with a couple of the residents two Fridays ago, and we travel all over Oakland and Chukka Tuck, looking at various ditches that has, needs some maintenance activity. But we also talked with a young gentleman who came up here on the sewer. We went by his house. And what occurs to get a sewer project going is, and I was talking to two of the residents, and basically we're looking for a letter that goes to the Director of Public Utilities with some of the neighborhoods of the areas' interests. And then we would do a formal petition process at that time. And at that point, we have to work it in the CIP and go from there. Now, the project that we have ongoing, of course, does not cover the areas that we walked mostly the other day. We are a little bit south, as a young, as a gentleman said, that we were a couple streets south where we were walking, we were on Everett's Road. Now, Pembroke Lane, we've had some temporary drainage work put along Pembroke Lane about two years ago after we had some flooding over there. And of course, we've had some heavy rains here recently that's caused some impacts in that area. There's a project for that is about 60% done on plans for the outfall along Pembroke Lane. Now, there would have to be some right-of-way acquisitions to construct that. And I would say that, talking to staff, it's about 12, 18 months out from what I got today. Now, as we talk about the corner of Everett's and Route 10, where a lot of the drainage impacts happen there too, we're still, you know, a little bit out there. We have bought some land across 10 for what we call a best management practice, or really it's a stormwater pond that we picked up in the last two years, within the last 18 months, I believe we acquired that. But that's a longer solution. And talking with the Director of Public Works today, there's one concept that is being looked at, is can we move water off Everett's over to Audubon to an outfall ditch that would go to Crump's Mill Pond? That would take it off the corner where we're having some issues, but still, that's conceptual. But we have work to do, we, you know, we visited everything from Eagle there down to Pembroke over to Brown, over to Willard, and there was one street, I can't remember the name, that was where the gentleman who came to Mike lived.
That's an easement.
It's an easement, okay. That's why I didn't remember the street name. But they did, there is drainage issues in that area, there's no doubt about it. But of course, as we, you know, look at what it takes, you know, we'll have to come up with some new plans. I mean, our concentration on the ARPA money was in around the Brown to a little bit further north on Ren and the others, Hawk and those streets there. So we still, we have money in the CIP in the out years that we continue to work in the area. But again, all of it doesn't happen overnight. I mean, we've got to work on it. I think we have some areas that we can do a little bit more maintenance on to maybe leave some of the drainage. There is a big ditch that we looked at on the easement area that didn't appear to have a direct outfall. I got to get with staff and walk through some of these issues with them. But we visit and walked the neighborhood and drove the neighborhood about two weeks ago. So, and each time I go out there, I learn more things, obviously. I got a little history lesson when I was there two weeks ago on Oakland and where the proper signage should be for Oakland and a few other items. But we, you know, I know there's frustration, I know Mr. Jones is frustrated, but that project is, again, bids are due on July 3rd for that area. So that's one step, but it's not the answer to everything we walk through. It's just a start. Let them continue, you know, to talk with the residents and see what we can do in the
Well, I can attest it's been a long, long project and a long time coming. Because I can, I'm looking at the audience, I've probably been to half of everybody's house in the last decade. And it seems like, you know, we put a Band-Aid on something and it's okay for a little bit, and then six months later, it pops out someplace else. And of course, what I've relied on is the original, I guess the ARPA money, which is $8 or $9 million plus, that still hasn't been spent. That's there for that purpose, and hopefully we can address some of these other issues. I mean, if I've been to Roosevelt's house one time, I've been there 10 times. You know, I've walked through a foot and a half of water sitting on people's yards. I've seen frogs and toads growing in the yard at certain times. I've walked through the woods to, I can't remember the name of the street, maybe it's Brown, where there's used to be under, under-street drainage. So, like I said, it's, it's, it's been a frustrating process for everybody, and I know it takes money and it takes time. I really don't, I don't know. Like I said, I'll just, I'll just agree with you and say it's been very, very frustrating. A lot of it has been created over time with the elevation of the road, the elevation of a lot of properties, when infill development, I mean, we can go on and on and on, the contributing factors. And I'm just, with this bid that went out on July 3rd, that's a pretty, that's a substantial project, am I right? That, can you tell me what that entails?
That is a sewer, water, and stormwater project. It has a sewer for all those streets, Ren, Hawk. The streets right in those areas. Paul, would you come?
Can I ask you something? Do you not understand why you leaving the Oakland area from Pembroke Lane down to Brown Lane, where we live and where the most flooding fall in for putting their city sewers? Why do you leave that in the Oakland area, right from Pembroke Lane down to Brown Lane? It's homes and everything, it's selling all our taxes. And we would like to see city sewer in that area. We would like to know why that we skipping Oakland area for putting their sewers?
I think I'd like to suggest that maybe, you know, we've had several meetings in the past, maybe that the manager and staff, we arranged, I know I've been in a meeting with Paul before, it hadn't been that long ago. I've been to meetings with Robert. We just, at this particular time, I think we just, we just need another update. I mean, it looks like we've got some major projects that are finally getting ready to come to fruition. I mean, we've addressed a lot, we've done a lot piecemeal. I look at what Everett's Road looks like now, we had an issue with some paving and some drainage, and a lot of that, I know there's still probably some up near Lorna's house, but further down, we've addressed a lot of that. And working, I don't know, it's, like I said, frustrating is the word for it. I don't think it's due to lack of concern or lack of attention, but you as citizens aren't really, you know, lip service and figuring, finishing, fixing the problem, I get it. You know, I get it. I, you know, I, I know all of you, you know, you're all neighbors and friends, and I know that, like I said, telling us something's gonna happen is a lot different than seeing something happen. So I'll get, I promise I'll get with the manager and I'll get with Councilmember Butler Barlow, and we'll sit down and see if we can have another sit-down and bring you up to date and give you some information that hopefully will have some significant results in the near future. Now, what that is, I know that sounds kind of vague, but that's at this particular point, that's kind of where we are. And so I think we just need to be honest with each other, and for us to let you know where we are, what we can do, hear your concerns again, and see what we may or may not be able to address in the near future. So with that, Mr. Manager, anything else you'd like to add?
No, other than, you know, we started with an area that we brought here with the ARPA funding. It's Phase 1, we're talking Phase 1 here, it's not that this is always to be the only thing we ever do, it's just that, you know, that's a $14 million project we're getting ready to work on. And so if we had $30 million, we'd have probably been able to expand the project out more. But we had $14 million in ARPA funding. We identified what we thought was the area where we could build out as Phase 1, because you put your pump station on a sewer project at the lower end, you build out from that. If you realize you've got a 50-foot drop across that village from Everett's to the water plant, goes downhill 50 feet. So you build at the lower end, you put your pump station, you build up, and that's what, why that area is probably where it is in initial phase. So we didn't really skip over anyone, I want to say that, and it's not, obviously, you're not in Phase 1, but we're, you know, we've got to work towards it. We got to work from Phase 1 to the next phases, and that's where we got to do.
For the last 20 years, after I moved to Chukka Tuck, or 50 years, 60 years, when my first thought to be set to get our city sewers out there, did we keep, kept the same house, that we worked with the water, and now it's giving over?
Again, I think we're trying to build in phases, we're not trying to skip everyone. Everyone's needs are important.
As I said, we'll, you know, we'll go ahead, before we go, I said, we don't want to, we don't need to do a Civic League meeting or a town hall right now. I just want to let you know, we will be getting together shortly. We hear you, I understand you, I share your frustration. I know Councilmember Butler Barlow shares your frustration, and the city manager does also. So we will be getting together shortly to arrange a time where we could give you some specifics as to what will, and what will be done, what can be done, so you'll have a better idea and of some realistic expectations as to what you should see in the near future and why.
I think we can talk about a little 2 years, why do you have?
I can't hear. Okay. I'm sorry, we're gonna go ahead and cut off the discussion so we can continue with the meeting. It's my fault for opening it up right now, but I promise you, we'll be getting together soon. Okay, let's move on to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have the following additions to this evening's agenda.
The first is a nomination for the Agricultural Industry Representative. The nominee is Carson Daughtry. The second is a nomination for the Nansman Farm Bureau Representative, and that is Michael Griffin. The third is a nomination for the Peanut Soil and Water Conservation District Representative, Richard Waltney. And the fourth is a nomination for the Farm Service Area Local Administrative Area Chukka Tuck Representative, David Bosselman. And all of those are for the Agricultural Advisory Board. And the last nomination is Mr. James Ectall for the Paul D. Camp Community College Board. Effective, and that will be effective on July 1st of 2024.
Counsel, motion's being presented. Councilman Johnson?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Counsel, do we have any new business that would like to be brought forward for action? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments. And at this time, I'll ask if Media Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start the announcements off this evening with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe the Juneteenth holiday on Wednesday, June 19th, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume the following day, June 20th, at 8:30 a.m. Trash and recycling collection, as well as Suffolk Transit schedules, will run as normal. Suffolk Transit will also offer a fare-free day that day. And the Capital Programs Department has shared a brief construction update on the much anticipated Downtown Festival Park. With the combination of unforeseen site conditions and rainy weather, the new park is slated to open in time for July festivities. The TGIF concert series initially scheduled to take place at Festival Park has been relocated back to Constance Wharf Park in Marina. And Parks and Rec has just announced the musical lineup, which will feature The Fuzz Band on June 14th, Nashville Nights on June 21st, Vinyl Headlights on June 28th, and the Original Rondelles on July 12th. Bring your own chair or blanket, the festivities begin at 6:00 p.m. and the bands will perform from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. Admission is free and open to all ages. Food trucks will be on-site for purchase and beer will be available for those who are 21-years-old or older with ID. And the Parks and Rec Department is excited to announce the 50th Fest, a celebration of the city's 50th anniversary and the grand opening of Downtown Festival Park. The celebration will take place on Saturday, July 13th at 5:00 p.m. with a night full of nostalgia and entertainment. This inaugural event at Downtown Festival Park will feature food trucks and family-friendly festivities throughout the night. Local 70s cover band Inside Out will set the mood. Come dressed in your best 70s attire for a chance to win the costume contest. The celebration continues after the concert with a screening of the 70s classic Superman starting at 8:30 on their impressive 40-foot movie screen. For more information, visit SuffolkParksAndRec.com. The City of Suffolk is excited to announce the opening of applications for the Downtown Suffolk Advisory Committee. This committee plays a crucial role in shaping the future of downtown Suffolk and is instrumental in guiding its development. Established to provide input and recommendations on matters related to downtown revitalization, the Downtown Suffolk Advisory Committee serves as a vital link between the community and the city government. Members of the committee will be tasked with promoting economic development, preserving historic landmarks, enhancing public spaces, and fostering a vibrant downtown atmosphere. The committee will consist of 11 members appointed by Suffolk City Council, representing various sectors of the community, including residents, business owners, property owners, and other stakeholders with invested interest in downtown Suffolk success. Suffolk Advisory Committee, oh, excuse me. Applicants interested in serving on the Downtown Advisory Committee are encouraged to visit the city's website at SuffolkVA.us to access the online application form and review the eligibility criteria. The application deadline is July 1st. And Suffolk Public Works advises that beginning Monday, June 3rd, Norfolk Southern will have a flagging operation in the 1300 block of Holland Road for maintenance on the railroad bridge from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The maintenance is expected to take, to last until June 17th, and motorists are encouraged to use alternate routes during this time. And spring is upon us and the Planning and Community Development Department reminds property owners to maintain their grass. A notice of violation can be issued for grass exceeding 10 inches in height. The property owner has 10 days to come into compliance or the city will abate the violation and place a lien on the property. The City of Suffolk's Public Safety Committee is pleased to announce the launch of its new public safety portal. The online platform empowers citizens to share suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters in a quick and easy manner. Users also have the option to submit anonymously. Residents are reminded that this portal is not intended for reporting criminal activity and in the event of an emergency, to please dial 911. For more information on the Public Safety Committee and the portal, visit SuffolkVA.us. And Suffolk's National Night Out 2024 is officially beginning with the community kickoff event scheduled for 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 24th, 25th at Suffolk City Hall. Community and neighborhood groups are invited to attend and find out what this year's big event is all about, as well as register for the big night out with the Suffolk National Night Out Committee. Suffolk has a longstanding tradition of excellence with National Night Out and is ranked in the top 10 nationwide for over a decade. Last year Suffolk placed second in our population category. This year's National Night Out will be celebrated on Tuesday, August 6th. For more information, visit SuffolkNNO.com. And the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce and the City of Suffolk hosted the annual Suffolk State of the City on May 21st at the Hilton Garden Inn. With the record-breaking attendance of over 550 people, the room was packed with business professionals from across the region. Attendees enjoyed an address from Mayor Mike Duman on Suffolk's accomplishments over the last 12 months while also highlighting Suffolk's 50th anniversary. And we even managed to infuse a little bit of humor with a Suffolk-themed Price is Right skit. And while I have the microphone, I would like to take a moment to express my thanks to the behind-the-scenes team that made this production possible. While the actual event only lasted two hours, it took many, many months of planning and coordination that touched every department in the city. I would like to recognize some people who were instrumental in making this event a success. First off, the Communications Department, Andy Franklin, Valerie Baker, Brandon Gonzalez, Kevin Kaiser, and Destiny Williams. And I would be remiss if I didn't give special recognition to Mr. Danny Epperson, the creative force behind the Price is Right masterpiece. This is, this is a team and the backbone of the state of the city. Thank you to Kevin Hughes for your ideas and support, to Delaney Rhodes and the entire Economic Development Team, to Tim Daniels at the airport for arranging the safe transport of the inflatable Mr. Peanut, to Steve Smalls and his Capital Programs Team for the transport of the rental plants from Lancaster Farms, to Captain Chad Hooker and the Suffolk Police Department for traffic control, to Hassan Patterson in IT for his teleprompter experience, and to Teresa Earls in the Division of Tourism for trusting us to debut your like no other campaign. And of course, to you, Mayor Duman, it was an absolute pleasure working with you again this year. Thank you again for your trust in me to represent the City of Suffolk. And of course, to close this out, on your screen are the various ways you can stay connected to the City of Suffolk happenings. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements and comments from counsel. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
I, I don't have a whole lot to say tonight. I'm excited about the Marcus program. Didn't, I didn't want to repeat what everybody else said, but I think that that's an excellent program coming into the city. And I, I think it's trend-setting for the area and I, I'm excited to see how it goes. The end of the meeting kind of got my attention away from everything else and I, I know they've left, but I just want to say to the citizens that are in the community of Oakland and greater Chukka Tuck, I want to tell you that I appreciate your love for your community. I appreciate your willingness to stand up for the needs that you have in the community and I hope that we can work to get things done sooner rather than later. I want to say I'm sorry that this is taking so long because I know it's hard and I know that your struggles are real and we're going to work on it and you have my word on that. So, thank you for coming out tonight and thank you all for being willing to listen to what's going on in the Oakland-Chukka Tuck area. It's, it's a bad problem and I think that we have a solution in the works. It's just going to take a while to get to everybody. So I thank the city staff and the manager and everybody, the mayor that spends time out there. I think you heard tonight, it's, it's tough. It's really tough and it's not getting any better and I hope, I hope that help is on the way. So, thanks for everybody's support and with that, I'm going to say goodnight.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. Just a couple things. I would just like to give a quick mention to Mr. Whitfield. Who has been a bus driver for 70 years. He has been really on television and been all over Facebook and all congratulating him and I just wanted to take a moment just to say thank you, Mr. Whitfield, for your years of service to the schools and to the students. And that was, you showed a lot of love to them through the years and I was told by many people that he was one of the best bus drivers that kids ever had and they loved all, they loved you so much, they didn't have much problem being on your bus. So I just want to recognize Mr. Whitfield for his years, 70 years of service to the students and the City of Suffolk. Also, I'd like to send my condolences out to a former friend of mine, we used to call him Spud, Chief Jackson. He served here as Chief of Police for, I don't know, a number of years. And I just want to send condolences and condolences to his family and all of his passing and we definitely missed the conversation that we usually have and we talked back and forth even after he retired. So that will be missed and I feel just sorry for the family of the loss. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson?
I'll be brief too. I'm going to start off though by congratulating the mayor on his State of the City. It was very well done. Jennifer, you and your staff, you did an amazing job. This is twice in a row. That's pretty amazing. It's a good job. And I want to give a little kudos out, James, to the Suffolk News Herald again. I got to work this morning, the first thing I could do is read the paper on Wednesdays. I look forward to Wednesday. The paper is chock-full of good news stories about the City of Suffolk. If you don't read it on Wednesdays, do it. It makes you feel good. The article in there about all the graduates and make, you couldn't help but feel good looking at all those faces and the fact that Booker T. Washington is going to be a, what kind of school is that? I mean, it's going to be a STEM academy. We're pretty darn unique in this city and we've got lots of good things going forward. But if you read the paper, you'll see it. The other thing, for anybody that wants to be a part of the Downtown Advisory Committee, Jennifer already announced it once, but I'm going to do it again. Deadline is July the 1st and you can be a part of where our city is heading and put your words in as far as what you want to see to happen. So it's an opportunity. That's in the paper too, as well as lots more. But we are very blessed in this city to have a paper like the Suffolk News one day a week. That's okay. I'll take it one day a week, but it's, it's an opportunity to get to know other citizens. I'm going to be pretty quick. Kings Fork Rooting Club turns 75 this year. On Friday, from 4:00 to 7:00, they're having a $12 something. You can stop by there and pick up a plate. I don't know what they're serving, but, but recognize the Rooting Club. We're very blessed to have them in our community and that's Friday at the Rooting Clubhouse. Cove Point folks that were here tonight, I'm going to see you tomorrow night. I'm going to come by, we're going to chat about everything going on. Marcus Alert, I said it in my spiel, I, we are so blessed to have this in our city. It's something that's so needed and there's so many families that are going to be touched by it. I am truly, truly excited and you can see the excitement on these guys' face. Fellow that was up here from Car Lane talking about the need for transportation, need for transportation plan, a better plan. All I say is M.D. Friday. Mother's Day Friday was the day he was talking about, the traffic was so bad all over Tidewater. And we do need to recognize that for the future. We've got to be looking at the future. So I can empathize with him, sympathize with him, but we do need to work on our transportation in this city and moving people around, especially using our backroads. And with that, I'll say goodnight. Thank you.
Councilmember Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, Jennifer, once again, and Mr. Mayor, to echo Councilman Johnson, great State of the City speech, I'm really looking forward to the 70th night and I've been waiting for an opportunity to pull my leisure suit out of the back of my closet. I just hope it still fits. And I also want to thank you for the public service announcement about the grass growing. It's been a great spring for growing things. We've had a lot of rain, a lot of cool nights and whatnot, so, so please take care of your grass. I mean, in addition to it being unsightly, it provides cover for all kinds of rodents and varmints and, and other things that you really don't want to have creeping around, around your house. So thank you very much for that. Chief Bowie, I was sorry to have missed the law enforcement memorial service, but unfortunately, you know, we, some of us do have lives outside of city council and I had another engagement over in Norfolk that morning, but I assume it went very well and congratulations to you and your department. Let's see, along with Mayor Duman and Councilman Johnson, we attended the Pilots Club Annual Civic Awards night. It's nice to see some of the folks that they do award get recognized because I think they're easily overlooked. You know, they include the bus drivers for disabled students, teachers' assistants for disabled students. So I, I think those are well-deserved awards and I congratulate the Pilot Club for taking the opportunity to recognize those individuals. And then I want to thank the Kingsborough Civic League for once again inviting me to their recent meeting. There are a lot of things going on over in Kingsborough and I appreciate you keeping me abreast of them. And then let's see, on Memorial Day, along with councilperson Butler Barlow and I believe City Manager Al Moore, we went to the Memorial Day Program at the Albert G. Horton Jr. Veteran Memorial Cemetery and despite the rain, it was a very moving and rewarding experience. And Al, I want to thank you and the city again for making the arrangements to have the City of Suffolk be able to present a wreath at that ceremony. And Councilman Johnson, thank you very much for doing the wreath. I think, as I told you, if they gave a beauty prize for the wreath, I think you'd easily come in number one or two. It was very, very well done and thank you for that. And then this past weekend, I attended the Virginia Summit to comment, to combat antisemitism that was held Sunday and Monday at the Hilton over in Norfolk and it was sponsored by the Combat Antisemitism Movement. Speakers there included the governor, the lieutenant governor, the attorney general, the Speaker of the House of Delegates for the State of Virginia, the minority leader for the Virginia Senate, and Congresswoman Jen Kiggins. And then also addressing the group virtually was the President of the State of Israel. The Sunday night affair was moderated by former Governor George Allen and included firsthand accounts of the tragic events of October 7th from a trauma nurse who was on duty at the local hospital that day and a police officer who was on duty at the music festival site. And then I would like to publicly thank the Nansman River Garden Club for their generous gift to help with the landscaping of the new Downtown Festival Park. I, I think that's a great, great contribution and the city is very much in debt for remembering us in that way. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate the girls softball team and the boys lacrosse team from Nansman and Suffolk Academy for winning the state title in their division. And remarkably, for the girls softball team, this was their fifth state title in a row, which means that even if a girl started on the softball team, was a member of the team in the eighth grade, she went through her entire career without ever knowing what it's not like to win a state title. And, and I think that's just remarkable. And so I want to congratulate Coach Thornburg of the, of the softball team and then Coach Johnson of the boys lacrosse team. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to echo what Mr. Councilman Bennett said about Mr. Whitfield, like to wish him a happy retirement. You know, 70 years is a long time to be on any job and he's gaining respect of so many people in the And he's gaining respect with so many people in the city of Suffolk and I'd just like to wish him a happy, happy retirement. State of the city, Mayor, Jennifer and staff, excellent job. It was one of the best. Y'all did a great job. I was proud. I'm always proud of our city, but I was proud that day. You know, and that Price is Right, Price is Right? Oh, my man, that was, that was great. That was great. We had a good council meeting tonight and I wanna wish everybody a happy Juneteenth holiday. And my word for the month of June is freedom. It's the power or right to act, speak, or think as one wants without hindrance or restraints. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. First off, everybody said great things about the state of the city. You did a great job there. Jennifer, you and your staff and along with all the other folks that tied into that to make it what it is. And as Mr. Williams said, that was pretty cool with the Price is Right. I had a chance in the early 80s to go on the Price is Right with my sister and my wife. So, it kinda brought back the old days with Bob Barker, 'cause I had a chance to meet him and it was great. I just happened to be in California and said, "Well, I gotta go to the Price is Right today." And we lined up and it took us all day to go on that show, all day. But it was great. But anyway, I think everybody enjoyed it and I think it brought a lot out about Suffolk. Every time we meet, it does. Chief, your law enforcement memorial was great. We always have to remember those that have fallen, our men and women that are in uniform that try to protect us and sometimes things don't go just right and we lose one here or there. We've lost around the country a lot of police officers, day in and day out. There's either one or two or whatever around the country and it's just staggering to hear that kinda thing going on, that there are normal people just like us, but they put a uniform on to take that opportunity to protect us. And it just is blowing my mind that this is happening. Again, I'll echo with what Mr. Bennett said and Mr. Williams about Mr. Whitfield. 85 years old, started on that job when he was 15 years old. I mean, he, I can't imagine driving a bus that long. I mean, he must've had the iron steel of a person because it's tough to load those kids on every day, protect them and get them out to school. But that's pretty cool and I think, you know, he should be recognized. But the one good part about it that he talked about is said that he would come back in a part-time role to make sure that his bus route, and he's gonna be on that bus probably with that whoever replaces him, to be sure that they know the route and they take care of them kids that they pick up every day. So, he's gonna make sure of that and you can't ask any more than that from anybody. Boy, that's just super great. I won't go any more deeper into the Marcus program than I did, but I would tell you something. That touches me real close because that's gonna be a magnificent program for the city. Everybody just has to buy in and work with it and I will support it in any way I can because I think it's just gonna be great. We can't say anything more than that. Thanks for the ones that came out and spoke tonight. I know there's a lot of problems out there in the Oakland area, Chucka Tuck, and I think the mayor addressed it, the city manager addressed it. But I'm a person that believes that there isn't anything we can't do if we can put our minds to it and find a way. So, I'm hoping that somewhere along the line that those people eventually will get some relief and they will get help. And I'm hoping to hear good things about that. I think you brought up, Mr. Richter, about the grass. Cut your grass, you know? There's a lot of people out here that got the grass going high, I think it was brought up tonight. I'd like to know about, not the residential so much, but commercial property that's vacant that allows the grass to get five and six feet tall. That's almost as tall as the average person. I mean, I've got one right next to you, Caliber Collision, the grass is at least three to four feet off the ground. So, we wanna talk about residents getting hit with tall grass. Why are we and our inspectors, when they're out there, not looking at these commercial pieces, notifying these people to get your grass cut? I fight it every year on Windwood right there at Route 17 and Bridge Road. Fought it for years to get that guy to cut the grass, cut the grass, cut the grass. He's finally got it, I think, and he's doing a pretty good job over there. But I'd like to see that also with the commercial being looked at as well as the residential. I think we had a pretty good meeting tonight, a lot of information. I think I wanna thank the young lady that comes out and gives us a legislative agenda every year, what happened there. I'd like to thank the city attorney's office for giving us a little help too with this. And it's always good information. It's a lot of information. So, it's a matter of what are we gonna do with it, if there's anything we need to do with it. And I think there is some that we need to look at. So, with that, I'll see you all in July. Goodnight.
Vice Mayor, what?
Yes, all week I was listening to BMI, BMN, and they kept talking about this bus driver. And I didn't know the bus driver for here in Suffolk, but I give them all my gratulations 'cause I didn't have no idea what was that. But they talked on the national news. Like you say, they say 70 years is a long time. Congratulations again. I had an opportunity to go to the homegroom of Ms. Lotta Smallwood. And it go way back that Ms. Smallwood, I never had a whole lot of conversation with her. But she would, I was impressed of the things she had done. And sometimes you can look at a person and then, you know, you look at the class she had, you know, how she dressed and all that type of stuff. She would see me at the banquets around the city and at the church, the church she attend. And she would always embrace me and encourage me of the things I have done around the city of Suffolk. So, it was a pleasure to see and when I read all the bituary, it's like, wow, you know, you can almost tell that type of person. She had so much style and class, dressed well. And then you find out she was very much involved with the kids at her early age at the daycare center. And they remember that and it's like what you can do at an early age. And she was maybe the first African-American woman to have a licensed daycare like that. And I wanna commend the pastor, Terrell Wiggins. I met him like a year or so at NAAC banquet. And I didn't know he was that explosive. I mean, he put, he did a great job. He's the new pastor, New Mount Joy Food and Living Ministry. He really impressed me. We got something there for the city of Suffolk. He gonna go places and he gonna do things in this city. So, I was much impressed. I go to churches, several churches, all type of churches, I'll go there. And he was very impressive and put on a good show, talked, and his message was great. Message was great. Senator Al, I wanna ask you a question about the Pewville. Me and you went to that meeting and I just wonder where we standing at now?
On the drainage project?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Talking to staff, the project should be out to bid for construction on the week of June 17th.
Okay, then.
Advertised.
All right. I think they had a meeting last night at 10:00, but I wanted to make sure that we, they know that, you know, we still had the concern that we had and we said we're gonna get it done. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to also mention all the prayer warriors that my granddaughter, Kyle, last month turned a year old and I thank you for all your prayers for her. State of the city, Mayor, you did a great job. Jennifer, I knew that we can count on you. I always know it's hard, but you can do to get the job done. And some of the councilmen's, we go to different state of the cities and we always measured hours. We up there, you know, and I'm so proud. There's so much stuff was going on I didn't know nothing about, so you couldn't ask me what was happening. And what happened is I got away contacting some of the councilmen's and they said we had, we got a lot of great things going on in Suffolk. So, like we said, we're proud of this city. Thanks again, Mayor. I knew you could pull it out too, so I thank you again. And I know how you worried about it, but the job was well done. Thank you again and Jennifer and her staff. And like I was saying earlier, Reverend Wiggins spoke on something and I just held it. He said it once or twice. And everybody go through a lot and people do things for whatever reason they do it. You know, leaders are there and people speak, people come up and people want you to listen to them and see what they say, see you respond. And I think we do the best we can. A lot of times we don't understand protocol. We don't understand the project and even at night, we working on it. It's not like saying we not listening, but time takes a little weight on you when you keep on waiting for a lot of things. I think some of my borough, I understand that. But he said something and I think a couple of councilmen's were there and I wanted to share, he said something and it been sticking to me ever since I was there. He said, in his message, he said a couple of times and this motivates me. He said, "Do you want me to fail?" This deep. God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. It has been, I think, three weeks since our last meeting, so there's been a lot that's gone on. Most of it's already been talked about. I guess I'll start with the state of the city. Jennifer, thank you and your staff for the time that, your time and ingenuity and creativity and whatever else you wanna call it. I know I stress over it, but it turned out all right, you know? And somebody said it was the top one or two. I can't remember who that is, but you're gonna have to talk to me afterwards 'cause it was the top one. No question in my mind. I don't know. Not that I'm prejudiced or anything. And I thought it would be tough to even get close to what we did last year. There was a lot of information in there and I wanna thank everyone who was responsible for putting that together, not only Jennifer and her staff, but as she mentioned, everyone else who had a hand in it. 'Cause it did take a group effort from city manager on down to ensure we had the resources to put everything together. Pilot Club, thank you once again for doing your awards for this year, the civic awards. I mean, we have firefighters and policemen, but as Councilman Richter alluded to, you know, we have civilians, we have bus drivers and we have teachers. And we have individuals that lots of times we don't recognize the way we should that have a positive effect on our citizens. The law enforcement memorial service, I mean, every year it just gives us an opportunity to recognize those officers that have made the ultimate sacrifice and just as importantly, to recognize those officers that put themselves in that position every day. So, thank you for all that you do for our citizens every day. As I like to say in that, the police department and the fire department provide the security blanket that allows us to sleep at night, 'cause that's what it is. The employee appreciation food truck radio, I forgot to mention that. That was a great event. I never saw so many employees that happy. You're feeding them too much, you're paying them too much, I don't know what's going on, but everybody was happy. You know, just, you know, the morale was off the chart. And when morale is, when morale is good, people automatically do better work at their job. And I see it in the workforce. And a lot of the folks that we have, yeah, we've got a little bit of turnover, but I think compared to a lot of other localities, we've, or I don't say we, I believe the city manager, 'cause it starts at the top, has created something that money can't buy. 'Cause if the only thing that motivates people to come to work for you is money, then they'll leave for money. But I think what we've offered is a work environment that maybe they can't get someplace else. And you can't buy that. So, keep doing whatever it is that you're doing. Congratulations to you and your department heads and everybody on down. Nansman River Garden Club, thank you for your donation to the festival site. We had a couple of folks, I wanna recognize Mr. Rutherford Whitfield first, as everyone else has mentioned to me, 70 years doing anything. It still blows my mind, you know? I close my eyes right now, I think of a 16-year-old driving a school bus. I mean, does that make any sense to anybody up here? I mean, it's like, you know, I can't think of a lot of 21-year-olds that would drive a school bus. But to have done that for that long, it truly is amazing. And I think he's still playing a role working part-time, if I'm not mistaken. So, we did, you know, a few folks passed away. Councilman Bennett mentioned Chief Jackson, Spud Jackson, who I've had the good fortune to meet also and get to know fairly well. Did end up with his motorcycle when he was unable to ride anymore before he was getting ready to sell his house and kinda to move. Great guy, but when you look at, you know, 20 years worth of tenure at that job is a lot. You know, it's a lot. And obviously, what he put in place during that time was kind of a pivotal time. Yeah, we weren't in a monster growth state, but between 76 and 96, a lot was happening. So, what he was able to do was set the foundation. And then from that foundation, those that came after him were able to build on it to where we are at the point today, you know? And Chief Bowie continuing to work on that also. And Chief Bennett before that and it just progressed. So, I know he'll be missed by his family. And also, Ray Carson, who worked at NSA for over 25 years, passed away. Yeah, I mean, just a great guy. One of the nicest human beings I've ever been fortunate enough to meet. I don't think he ever had a disparaging word to say about anyone. Touched a lot of kids, just an uplifting individual. And I know he'll be missed as well. And tomorrow is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And on D-Day, 2,500 Americans lost their lives. 2,000 alone just on Omaha Beach. More than 5,000 were wounded. Just, that's just one assault in one place during World War II, which of course, D-Day turned the tide of the war. So, once again, we've got a lot to be thought thankful for because of the sacrifices that those made before us. And with that, I have a quote from Stephen Ambrose, who is an author, and that is, "At the core, the American citizen soldiers knew the difference between right and wrong and they didn't want to live in a world in which wrong prevailed. So, they fought and won. And we, all of us, living and yet to be born, must forever profoundly be grateful." And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Fawcett? Got a motion to adjourn by Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams? Second. And a second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.